...in and around trees. So, part of the reason why one of these trees were taken out originally was our sidewalk wasn't wide enough. In order to get these four trees in, we are going to have to actually expand the sidewalk behind the existing back of walk right now, still within city right of way, but behind existing back of walk upwards of 18 inches and only for about 14 feet behind the tree. And that's in order to get a bump out of 18 inches around the tree in order to provide the accessibility. So that's why we've colored these a little bit different. Finally, from Cherry to Hall, we've seen an opportunity to get two more trees back in there. And then this is East San Carlos Avenue and we've pretty much maximized the amount of trees that can go in on East San Carlos Avenue. But I'm very pleased to say that the majority of the trees that were indicated south of Holly have been able, are potentially able to be put back into the project.
Thank you. Can I ask a procedural question? Is it appropriate, if the planning commissioners have question of Brian, to ask it? I know it's not an agendized item, so I just wanted to clarify.
You know, I think normally public comment is reserved for the public to make a comment. I perceive this is sort of a report on one aspect of the east side connect. I don't think we should have any colloquy or discussion about the item.
Okay.
And if there's going to be any discussion of what you've heard, it should be a separately agendized item.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay. And I have one more speaker card, David Crabbe. So David, if you can come on up?
Honorable Chair and members of the planning commission, I'm Dave Crabbe and I'm representing Sierra Club again tonight. And this is relates to Transit Village, but it isn't what's on your agenda tonight, so I felt like I could safely bring it up. And that is the reconfiguration of San Carlos Avenue from Walnut Street to El Camino Real. The, back in 2009, the traffic commission came out with a proposal to reconfigure San Carlos Avenue for those two blocks in anticipation that the Transit Village would get built. And the idea was to make those two blocks more pedestrian and bike friendly. And the thing that we're concerned about is that it doesn't seem like anything is happening on that project in relation to the city, and I'll defer to the staff if something is happening. But if nothing is happening, we would like to see this project brought back and reevaluated and prioritized because we feel that it is essential to development, assuming the Transit Village goes ahead and say three years from now it's developed, that this project should be developed in about the same time because it's a direct link between downtown and the Transit Village and it's part of transit oriented development and large scale planning and a station area plan. So we would ask you to maybe ask staff where we stand on that and I'd like to see the planning commission express some interest in prioritizing that as a proposal so that when the city, if the city can get it to a point where it has preliminary plans or it may be able to go for a grant, a planned Bay Area or some grant to in fact make it happen because it's really important. If we're trying to make a downtown that's really a transit oriented and a lively downtown, those two blocks or well exit first block is a major link. So thank you very much.
Thank you, David. And I guess then I would, I would ask that staff put this on a, on a separate agenda so we can come back to it?
Yeah, we can certainly come back with a report. Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Just to make a note, the minutes that we're approving are from our September 16th meeting because we were not able to approve those at the last meeting and we will be looking at approving the September 30th meeting at a, or minutes, excuse me, at a future meeting. So are there any changes or additions to the September 16th minutes?
Not for me.
Nope, I have none either. Okay, can I go ahead and have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. Great. And we will go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda, our media item. And that is the public hearing for the Transit Village Plan Development. This item, as you guys know, is continued from the September 16th and September 30th meetings. At the September 16th meeting, we heard from the staff and the developer, we heard the staff presentations and the developer presentations and public comment. And at the September 30th meeting, we addressed some of the questions and issues raised during public comment as well as some written comment and commissioner questions. At this meeting, we're going to continue with commissioner questions, discussion and deliberation. And what I'd like to do to move the meeting forward is to talk about specific topics in groupings and see if we can get some general consensus on those groupings before moving on to the next topic. Specifically, I'd like to go in this order, if this is okay with the commission. I'd like to talk first about the building bulk and mass. I think that's a really important issue. We didn't necessarily touch on that and I think that may be a deal breaker for anything else we talk about, so I'd like to do that first. Then I'd like to go ahead and wrap up our discussion on landscaping, wrap up our discussion on shuttles, wrap up our discussion on parking, wrap up the TDM and traffic, look quickly at south of Arroyo and then address any other commissioner topics. So that's the order I'm proposing, obviously. It's up to you guys and I'm flexible, but that's how I'd like to work it.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. Building, the bulk and mass of the buildings, landscape, shuttles, parking, TDM and traffic, south of Arroyo. Not all these are going to be big discussions, some bigger than others. And then any other commissioner topics that you guys would like to discuss. Now, as I said at the last meeting, I want every commissioner to feel heard and to make sure that we have examined every aspect of this project thoroughly. However, I would like to do our very best to keep on point on items that we as a planning commission have control over and items that have a nexus to this project. I do understand that sometimes we're not going to necessarily know if we have control or if there's nexus until we ask the question, but once that's established, if we can move forward, I would really appreciate it. And in order to maintain progress and momentum, I would like this meeting to go as long as it needs to go, but obviously that is up to you guys. I have supplied you with protein and I have nuts and other things here to continue things and of course we'll take an appropriate break for restroom and whatnot. Okay? So having said that, I'd like to go ahead and start with the building bulk and mass and then if everybody can move on. Oh, yes.
I just wanted to let everyone know that I did watch the videos, so I am up to speed and I appreciated Vice Chair Silverman's comment about the tree holocaust. I thought that was very apropos, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to declare ex parte communication?
Yeah, forgive me, it's probably appropriate that we declare our ex parte communication at this point. Thank you.
Okay, so I've met with Ben from McGriff and I've also met with Jeff and Jess from Legacy Partners.
Thank you, Shana.
I haven't met, but I've spoken with Brian Fitzpatrick and city staff.
Great, thank you.
Let's see, I think I got a phone call from one or two people in the neighborhood, but that's about it.
Nothing since last week?
Yeah, I also have nothing additional since last week. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So I'd like to go ahead and start our discussion around building bulk and mass. And really quickly, I'd like to ask a staff clarification before we get started. The specifics about the design elements such as color, building materials, is this stuff we can have input at during the design review phase, the stuff we don't necessarily have to bring up now as conditions of approval?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and jump on in. Who would like to start?
Why don't you start?
Okay, I can start. Sure. Why not? Okay, so I'm going to start with the biggie then and this can, I guess, maybe see how we go from here. It's been suggested that, certainly in public comment and by commissioners, that a reduction in all residential buildings from four to three stories and all commercial buildings from three to two stories is of interest. And I guess what I want to know is where the commissioners stand on this and if the commissioner consensus is in favor of, is not in favor of an overall floor reduction, I'd like to go building by building and address issues of bulk, mass and sets. What I noticed most particularly from our walking tour and our other discussions are some, what I think might be some sticking points are building three and building eight. So that's how I'd like to see things go.
Can we get up maybe?
Yeah, can, would staff be able to put the, put the plan development, plan on the screen so we can take a look?
The other two potential sticking points are building one and two.
Building one and two. Thank you.
So I don't know if you want input yet, but I'm not in favor of a unilateral reduction of four to three and three to two.
Yeah, me neither.
Thank you.
I'm not in favor of a reduction in general.
I'd love to see a reduction in general, but I don't think that the commission is headed in that direction.
Great. Thank you guys very much. Awesome. So we can go ahead and move on then to talk about the buildings and why don't we go ahead and I guess go in order, start with building one.
Let me try to do it better.
On that note, pull my building up.
So the, the first thing I want to do is to draw attention to two items. The first one is Resolution 2003-79. And I'm going to read a little section here which is 4.845. "The focal point of the depot area should be the historic San Carlos Depot, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The area shall accommodate community interaction and diverse activities. Additionally, development within the project area adjacent to the depot should be sensitive to the massing and scale of the depot." Now, the depot's a one-story building and on either side of it, based on the newly revised building height standards, are 41 feet 10 inches and 46 feet 9 inches, okay? To me, that really doesn't take into consideration being sensitive to the massing and the scale of the depot. So that's one piece of information. The second is the land use policy, L8.11. "Discourage abrupt changes in building scale. A gradual transition between low-rise to mid-rise buildings should be achieved by using the low-rise buildings at the edge of the project site. Consider the relationship of buildings to the street, to one another and to adjacent structures and land uses, especially single-family residential." So when you actually look at those two together and having been on the steering committee or the stakeholders committee for the project 10 years ago, the sticking point at every point, at every meeting was height. And so when I look at this, to me, I look at, I will start with building eight.
Okay.
Okay? I'm going to go in the opposite direction. Because to me, that, having three-story buildings on either side of that single-story depot really doesn't take into consideration the sensitivity to the depot. It's our historical landmark.
Is it possible to get the rendering that you, the perspective rendering that you had before? I don't even know if you have it.
I'm not sure. We're in the, we're in the... We're in the process of loading the PD. That's what, that's where Lisa has gone is to be able to load the plans from the plan development plan, so we'll have all of those sheets.
Yeah, if, I'm not sure if you have a plan set with you, but drawing A3.6 is, shows the elevation of the retail buildings adjacent to the depot. I think that might be the best illustration of the change in height approaching the depot. And while we're getting those images, hopefully we can get them on screen here in a few minutes. I'd just like to remind the commissioners that Legacy and I did meet with the State Historic Preservation Organization about this very issue really early on in the project. And the result of our graduation in height and also the step back in plan, the distance itself to the depot, was discussed with State Historic Preservation Organization and they were in favor of the approach that we were taking.
Thank you for that. Okay, so Scott, and we're talking about building eight at this point, right? So what you're saying is that you would like to see some further reduction, at least on the side that's flanking the depot? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, the idea, I mean, the idea of land use element 8.11 was that the center of a development would be the taller part and that it would scale down at either end. And what we have here is sort of a monolithic flat four stories, okay, in most places. And it attempts to scale down a little bit when you get to building eight, but the reality is, is that it goes from 40, from, let's see, the tallest point is building five, which is 53, 50 feet. Building four is 50 feet. And building eight, the, shall we say, is 46 feet. So we've really only come down a couple of feet on either end of the project and on the opposite end of the project, we haven't come down at all.
You mean from the building one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I mean, I look at it and go, you know, we're not, we're not meeting that, the intent of that land use element.
I guess at this point, I'd like to see if anybody else has any comments on the building flanking this and then I would like to ask, or excuse me, the building flanking the depot, and then I'd like to ask, I guess what you'd like to see as a condition or what you'd like to see specifically changed. But first, let me see what the other commissioners have.
What's the distance from building seven to the depot?
Building eight?
Building seven and eight, both. But I think we're looking at seven right now, right?
Yes.
We're looking at eight.
No, it's seven, that's seven.
On the screen.
On the screen, seven.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's a good question. Um, no, that's...
The other thing that you might want to notice is that when they do the pictures, you actually see the front of the depot and the front of building eight. When you look at the backside, the backside is actually taller, okay? And so the, and more of a solid wall than the front side of the building. And so that has a much bigger impact.
Right.
There's trees back there. So the distance...
I'm sorry, the distance between building seven and the depot?
Yeah, I don't have that dimensioned here, but it's about 18 feet.
About 18 feet.
And that's from this, it actually doesn't show up here, there's a little extension of the depot to this portion of the building here, it's about 18 feet.
And the peak of the, the peak of the depot is, let me see, I thought I saw it somewhere. What was it? 17 feet, is that about right? The height of the depot?
No, I think it's taller.
Let's just do that refine, so that's probably another five feet. So probably 20 something feet?
I mean, to me, the scale, I mean, it does, it scales down. It does, until you get to building eight. And then at building eight, it's out of place because it goes back up to almost 50 feet.
So what you're saying, Scott, is that, that little patio there isn't, doesn't count as scale, do you?
You mean that little one, that...
That one story thing?
Yeah. That's the only place that's, that's one story in the whole building.
Got it.
Everything else is, is three stories.
Okay.
And I've had discussions about the opportunity to reorient the upper floor so that it wasn't such a monolithic wall across the back. I was told that they've already reduced the square footage to 50% of the area on the fourth floor and that realistically, it would be better to remove the third floor than to try and squish it down into half the building because that would result in a significantly smaller floor area for that particular building.
Okay.
Is the height on building eight the same as the height on the, of the parapet on building seven? I mean, we can't see building eight from there. Is it similar?
It's similar. The parapet height on building seven, I think measures at 17 feet and the, and the parapet height on building eight is at 20 feet.
Okay.
And it's just, it accounts for a difference in the slope on the, there's actually a difference in grade from one side of the plaza to the other that accounts for part of that.
And building eight is largely the commercial space, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes, please.
Plan sheet A3.6 shows the building seven, the depot and building eight are in a single elevation, if that would be helpful.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we all, we all have that open. Okay. All right, well, unless anybody has any other questions of staff or Sheri about the buildings...
So can I bring up one more piece of information here? And that is that this is a very interesting area when, when it comes to landscaping and the fact that there was really only one tree planned for this area and that since then, they've attempted to add two additional trees in there.
You mean behind the building or in front?
Behind the building.
Right, I see that.
But by no means is this building have significant landscaping behind the building.
Right. And there's, it was a utility issue, if I remember correctly, on eight.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly what it is.
Okay.
And that would be my other question, is building eight flanks commercial on the east side, am I correct about that?
Correct. I was just considering the plan there.
Sort of.
Sort of, okay.
Oh, from the east side.
Okay, so that's, that's the rendering of what we would see from the east side, correct?
That's from the front of somebody's house.
Okay.
This is a commercial area here.
That's a commercial area, there's no, there's no house right there.
Yeah, there is.
There is?
There's a house in that corner?
It's a little further down.
It's, they're far enough down the street that they're in front of one of the houses there. Yes.
Okay.
So that's in front of somebody's house. And as you get further back, you actually see more of the building. This is probably the least impactful photo that you could actually take, okay? Another thing that we might want to consider here is they're actually asking for a waiver for the fact that all of these buildings exceed the 125-foot limitation on the length of a building. There isn't a single building except building seven that actually meets that linear foot length of a building that's a requirement in the zoning ordinance. So each one of these buildings is much more, is much longer than a standard building is allowed to be. And in fact, in one case, the building is 300 feet long. And so when you look at that, and one of the things that I did is I actually sat down and this, I'm going to go all over the place here. I sat down and I looked at measurements, okay? And not including Holly Street, not including the depot because they can't build on the depot. It's 1,958 feet long and there's 1,545 feet of building, okay? Which equates to 79% of the distance on this property is roughly a 50-foot tall building. So essentially what's going to happen is this is, as the neighborhood has described, a wall of buildings, okay? And so somewhere, somewhere along the way, we need to break up the massing of that buildings. If we look at land use element 8.2, it ensures that new development is sensitive to the character of adjacent structures, immediate and the immediate neighborhood. We look at 8.4, which promote pedestrian scale design through site planning, design building, finish details and landscaping for all types of development by requiring height and, height and local transitions between buildings of varied levels that are sensitive to the inner relationships of surrounding uses and structures, especially residential. Okay, we move on to 8.10. "On all sides of the buildings require the incorporation of quality architecture, design elements for all building facades and stepping back upper floors in order to reduce bulk and mass and break up the knotness lines." They did a decent job of doing that and I think that's, you know, when I look at the, in the context of all of these different land use elements, okay? And the fact that it's such a large stretch of 50-foot buildings, okay? Okay, 46 feet to 50 feet, and in fact, I was just noticing that at least two of the building heights have been amended to be over 50 feet, which is another height restriction that we have in the zoning ordinance. So I look at it and I, I think that somewhere along the way, we have to do something to break up the massing of these buildings.
As we observed that Scott is wrong regarding the variance issue, there's a four-foot additional allowed for slope roofs, which is what, what these are. So you're wrong about that.
But look at building four. The height is 50 feet 3 inches and 3.75 inches. It's actually 56 feet with the tower.
I thought you were talking about building five and building six.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, when you look at the overall mass of the, of the buildings, several of them are actually above the 50-foot limit.
Actually, that would just be one.
What about building three?
The 50-foot 9 inches?
Yes. So they're over, there's at least two buildings that are over 50 feet, okay? I know we're pushing the boundary here, we're, we're getting down to little things, but you know, each one of these sort of builds and essentially what you have is you have to the, to the surrounding neighborhood, you have a 50-foot wall to them.
And then another 10 feet's allowed for towers, so the 56-foot tower is okay too?
Right.
So it's just one?
It's not 9 inches. But building four is at 50 feet 3 and 3/4 inches. So actually there's two there that are over 50 feet.
I'm sure they'd be happy to reduce them by nine inches if we asked them to.
Yeah, I'm just, it's, it's, you know, pushing those boundaries and saying, you know, where do we make the adjustment? Where do we...
And I think that's exactly the discussion.
Yeah, what is your suggestion?
Right, that we need to have.
Is, is relatively simple. Reduce the height of building eight to two stories, okay?
I'm in agreement with that. I think we need to keep that height on building eight that there's, frankly, I think that the developer's done a, an adequate job of rescaling and changing the actual break so things fit with the character of the community and that's just my, I respect your opinion, but mine is that they've already made those accommodations and I think they've done a good job.
I share that. I mean, I do have, if someone had a suggestion, I, when I do look at building eight, it does seem somewhat, there doesn't seem to be a lot of variation in the height and I think it may just be the, the drawing that I'm looking at right now. I mean, I'd love to see it in a different way, but as far as the height itself, I agree.
Can I get a point of clarification? Doesn't most of this stuff come up in design review? I mean, the... I mean, the very specifics about the final look of the project. So, I mean, we're basically, I understand where you're coming from on that and I would agree to a certain extent, but design review would, you know, would incorporate all this stuff that we're talking, a lot of the stuff we're talking about. And I know we want to vet some of this information out there so that, you know, the developer and city council and everybody else hears our opinions, but at the same time, design review, you know, a lot of the stuff that you, and I, again, I appreciate you bringing it up, but a lot of this comes in, in design review.
Not the height.
I was gonna say, I don't think the height does.
Not the height. We're not gonna be able, in design review, we're not gonna be able to go, oh, well, you need to lower half of the building.
So, but we're talking, right now, we're talking about nine, nine inches on one building?
That's just showing how it's pushing the limits, okay? I'm not expecting that we're gonna lower building four or building five, but what I'm saying is, when you look at the entire stretch of buildings, it's, it covers eighty percent of the space from north to south. A half-mile wa, wall that's, that's fifty feet tall, okay? And there are a few breaks in there, but significantly, there, there's really nothing that breaks that up. There's no real difference in transitions in height. And so the question is, where can we add those transitions? Where can we make those changes?
Madam Chair, I think that we started with building eight and perhaps going back to building eight would be a good pointed departure, I think, from this discussion in addition to, and I have a, something that I think might help the commission in terms of the visual impact from this street, but with regard to the architecture and, and, you know, the variation in the elevations and articulation of the, of the facades, at the first meeting, the architect went through and explained to the commission the articulation of the facade and how it was designed to break up the bulk and mass. And if, it might help if, if you get stuck on a particular building for the architect to go through and explain how they tried to make the architecture work. But going back to building eight, I have a question. I note that the landscape architecture is here this evening and you see those trees there that are fairly, they're pretty mature. And as we did the tour with the commission, developer and neighbors, we, I recall, as you walked farther back, the building actually would recede from view. And these trees supply some screening. And I guess I would ask if the, if you could entertain the landscape architect for just a moment to ask if additional trees of that same scale and, and species could be planted in those openings there to completely screen that building from view on this street.
That's a fair point, Al. Thank you. Would you like to come up?
Yes, for me to entertain Paul Zatiri with a Giselle partnership, landscape architects. Physically possible to do. You could put more, they're Lombardi poplars. They're, they can be grown, you know, tight in a hedge. They're, that's about the, that's about as wide as they're going to get, you know, in terms of, in terms of width. So in terms of having another one between it, you could do it. From a purely arborist kind of perspective, you probably would not want to do that because they will touch. From a landscape architects' perspective, I don't think that that's necessarily a problem. I mean, I think it'd be, would be okay. It would create more of a hedge row effect. And those trees, you know, when they're used in Italy, for example, in hedge rows, they are planted closer together because they're intended to be wind screens as well, as well as view screens. So it could be done.
Okay.
Though it takes quite a lot of time for them to match heights, but the, the effect of, the screening effect that you're, as you're talking about, wouldn't take that long. They're fairly fast-growing trees.
How long would you, would you say?
Well, it depends on how, what their size is going in and what kind of care they get as you've, as we've talked about.
Right, right.
They're walking around out there. But it's assuming they get, they get reasonable care and they get water where they are, they're a water-loving tree. You know, I don't know when those were planted, but if I had to guess, which I, which I do have to guess, fifteen years.
Okay.
Is what about those trees out there? So I don't know if somebody actually knows when they were planted. Be happy to be corrected, but I think that's about the, the timing. And it would take less time than that for them to be effective. As you can see, if this mouse works, you know, they really only need to get into this kind of height range before they start being effective. And that would not take fifteen years. That would, that's achievable within five.
Five, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, so I'm sorry, Al, was your suggestion maybe to come back to building eight and work on some other buildings? Because you may have some more information.
Well, just with regard to screening this side from, from the east side neighborhood there, I think that a condition that could be added by the commission would be to add additional trees in these spaces to serve as a complete screen as suggested by the landscape architect. So that's something that the commission can entertain.
Point of reference.
If there's other questions about the architecture of building eight and how it relates to the depot, I think, again, bring in up the, the architect and if you want to go through the building, if you're interested.
Does the commission have interest in going through building eight with more closely to determine if we want to take the scale down or why it's the scale it is?
Not for me.
I wouldn't mind a brief.
Mind?
Yeah, kind of overview.
Okay, great. Sheri, would you mind coming on up for building eight on up there?
Okay, I'm gonna see if I can go back to the PD drawings here. Okay, so on screen right now are the elevations for buildings seven and eight. And I'll just start with the El Camino facade. And so as we were describing earlier, the, the buildings do step up from a single story to two stories to three stories on building eight and then from one story to two stories and then a taller two-story tower on, on building seven. So building eight has basically two hip roof elements connected by a loggia. And, and so this is the main bulk of, of building eight. It's three stories of this portion with the middle section of the third story, you know, set back at the loggia. And I'll just go to the east side of building eight here, which you're looking at in the upper portion here. This is the side closest to the depot. Again, this is the one-story terrace. This is the three-story portion. This is the three-story portion that stepped back, which is also very similar to the way, the treatment that we're doing on the El Camino side. And this is the other gable end here. Then it steps down again to a one-story terrace on this, on the south end. So this double hip roof with a loggia between is a very similar treatment to how we're treating the massing on, on El Camino. I think the difference is that we have this step-down two-story tower here as we're getting closer to the depot on this side. And, and this is the three-story element on the, on the east side. And so that's the difference. But I would say, in general, the intent of the massing, stepping up and down with the loggia between is, is a similar treatment on both sides of the street.
So Sheri, can I ask you a question? This two-story treatment in the front there on the bottom there?
Yes.
That's much more closer to the street than the depot, right?
Yes.
Okay. So when you actually get back to the, the area around the depot, you're really looking at the backside. And if you look at the backside, it's mostly that three-story piece, right? So to the right, right there. Yeah.
Right.
So back against the, the depot, you're really looking at a three-story building right next door and not a two-story building, which the, the front image, the view tends to portray.
On this, on this portion here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And part of that is also that we have the, the platform that is screening most of this building from the east side as well. So you're not seeing the, the platform in front of the building, but whereas from the street side along El Camino, you don't have the, the platform in front of the building.
And Sheri, I'm not sure if you can answer this question or if this is even a question to answer at this point, but this building is envisioned to be our Class A office space for this.
Correct. I think, and again, the, until the leasing actually starts to take place, I think it's, it's flexible. But I think the vision would be that the, the ground floor area would be probably suited for a restaurant, especially given that we have opportunity for some, some outdoor dining areas, which I think would be really nice. And then the upper floors would be, I think, ideally suited for the Class A office space. So there would be an elevator serving the upper floors as well. And typically, you know, a retail space above the ground floor isn't as viable as retail space on the ground floor. So I think that's just a natural sort of break-in use there.
Right.
Would office space work on the first floor?
Potentially.
Thank you, Sheri.
Sure.
So I guess my question then to the commission, just to, to move along our discussion on building eight then, is there's a compromise. If we're going to reduce any, any scale, whether it be just a slight, the slight edge flanking the depot or the back edge flanking the side, we would be sacrificing some, some Class A office space, which is, is fine. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. So I guess at this point, what I'd like to do is, is to see.
Can I ask a couple more questions here?
Yeah.
So when you talk about landscaping on the burn there?
Would you like Paul to come back up or?
Actually, I would like Mike, Mark, Mark Simon to come up.
Okay. And this is about the landscaping on the burn as it relates to building eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. What impact would having those tall, what are they, poplars, have on the electrification?
The ones that Paul just suggested?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, I think the way to ask the question is what impact would electrification have on those trees? As we discussed a week ago at our last meeting, we don't know the answer to that. As we indicated, both verbally and subsequently at your request in writing, we don't know yet what impact high-speed rail's usage twenty years from now or the Caltrain modernization more recently than that would be. Twenty nineteen is when we're supposed to be in service, so we begin looking at serious issues regarding the construction before then. Twenty fourteen is when we expect to have the environmental impact report available for comment. As I indicated last week, we expect that environmental impact report to disclose the worst-case scenario. We don't know what that is yet, but we fully expect and can commit that we'll be able to discuss at length and in some detail something less impactful than that. And as we indicated, both verbally and in the letter, we're prepared to sit down and discuss those issues in length and in detail with the community, with the city staff, and with the developer.
Is there the potential that the existing trees would need to be removed?
We can't really answer that. There's, is there potential? If you're looking for an answer, a definitive answer now as to whether or not this, that sort of impact will take place, I can't tell you.
So we really don't know whether landscape is going to be able to hide this building or not?
Right. I think that's a fair point. Thank you, Mark. That, for the commission to keep in mind that, that the trees that were potentially proposed are not necessarily guaranteed. So that's something for all of us to consider. Any other questions before we, before we get a consensus here on building eight?
That, that loggia's set back, correct? It's actually, it's, so it's.
It looks set back, am I right?
Correct.
Okay. I have to say that the height immediately flanking the, the depot did bother me a little. I felt better because it was further set back from the depot. So I, I could entertain some design change, but I don't feel that that's where the rest of the commission is on building eight. So I just wanted to see where you guys were at.
I personally would like to have building eight stay the way it is. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm fine, the same way.
You'd like to see it the same?
I mean, that would be my indication. I mean, if you had a suggestion for reducing the side, that side, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed in principle, but I mean, I, of all of the buildings, I would be least likely to want to reduce the commercial.
Okay. So it looks like it's you and I.
Okay.
In that case, Scott, unless there's anything concrete to suggest as a condition for building eight, I think we should move on.
I, I've asked that they look at orienting the floor space in the building because it's fifty percent of the space of building one, yet it occupies the same solid wall area up against the residential neighborhood to see if there's some way to orient that so that it creates less of a solid wall on the third floor. You know?
You don't think the crossover does that from the back? Pushes it?
Not really.
Okay, I see. I see. Well, I'd be open to reorienting the third floor. Would you like it pushed forward? Is that what you're thinking?
I would actually like it reoriented so that it doesn't cover the whole hundred and seventy-five feet of the building.
So you want it smaller?
Yeah.
Got it. Anybody else interested in entertaining a smaller third floor on building eight?
I think we've been asked already.
Right. Okay. I think, I think that's a fair point. All right. Well, in that case, it looks like our consensus is to keep building eight as is. And when we get to the landscaping portion, hopefully, we can add some stronger language there. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next building then. Well, let's work backwards. Any, any other additional issues with, with building seven? I didn't hear any in all of our previous discussion. I believe we all thought building seven was, was nicely scaled, but I want to make sure we've, we're covering every building. Anybody? Okay, building seven, check. Anything for building six, moving backwards? Can somebody tell me quickly where building six is in the, in the plans? Call it, do you know?
Are you looking for elevations or floor plans?
Elevation, please.
We're on sheet A three point five.
A three point five is building six?
Five and six.
Five ands. Building five and six. Okay. So, yes. And I understand that staff's recommendation to the developer is to take out the, the walkways in between building five and six. Am I correct on that?
That is one of the draft conditions, yes.
Okay, great. That is a draft condition I like a lot, just to put it out there. Does anybody else have any other, have any different opinion about staff's recommendation to remove, remove the walkways between building five and six? It would require the developer to put in other ways to get to the upper floors, so it will be.
Is this also accompanied with the recommendation to have an elevator in building five?
I believe so. Am I right on that? Yes, I think so.
And what is, can, we understand what the impact that is?
Sure. I'm, I'm gonna go back to the plans for building five and six and just explain what the impact of that would be to the building plan. Okay. So these are the lower floors of buildings five and six. Building five and six share an underground garage space here. The lobby space for buildings five and six currently, in the currently proposed design, has a shared lobby, which is in building six here with an elevator that you see here. So by having these bridged connections between the two buildings, essentially what we're doing is we're sharing circulation space and lobby space, trash chutes. The vertical circulation between these two buildings is greatly simplified by connecting them. So when we lose those, essentially what we have to do is, looking at the upper floors, we would have to have an elevator in each building. We'd have to have a lobby for each building because you'd have to get it at the ground floor, which is a split level. We also have to have an additional stair in one of the buildings because we can't share the stairs, et cetera, et cetera. So going back to the garage plan, what we'll see here is a loss of parking essentially, because we're adding stairs, we're adding a trash room, and we're adding an elevator. And so essentially, it would be the loss of about six parking spaces by splitting the buildings into two separate buildings. by splitting the buildings into two separate buildings.
By how many parking spots approximately?
And the loss of units as well.
And the loss of units?
Probably about three units, yeah, to fit all of the infrastructure in that would be required to separate the two buildings.
So the loss of three units and six parking spaces. Am I hearing that right?
Correct.
Any other questions for Sherri at this point while she's up? No? Okay, thank you, Sherri. I have to say that I think visually, just in keeping with the rest of the project and the view corridors, I do agree with staff and I do think that this, despite those changes, and I understand that that is a, that will be an additional architectural challenge for the developer, but I would like to see those removed.
Yeah, me as well.
I agree.
I can live with it.
Great, okay. Anything else for Building 5 and 6? Anything on the articulation height or anything else? Okay, great. Seeing nothing else, let's move on to Building 4, and then we can separate 3. Can somebody tell me quickly where Building 4 is on the plans? Immediately.
A 3.4?
Just before we move off of Buildings 5 and 6, I'd like to point out that the wording in the condition recognizes there may need to be, you know, we understand about the issue, but it wasn't just like, we'll take this out and that's it.
Right.
It might be that that stairwell or those other kinds of things could be added in that corner of the building, so there'd be a change in the building footprint. And that is something that could be looked at as part of design review.
Okay.
If the stairwell can be removed and without substantial expansion of the building, could the placement of various features be done to retain the parking, to retain the number of units? And we would look at that in detail at the design review stage.
Thank you. And just to be clear, somebody's taken a note of things that we'll be looking at for design review, right? I'm doing my best, but you know me. Okay, thank you, Collette. Okay, so Building 4, which I believe, yeah, A 3.4, I'm looking at it. Can somebody quickly remind me what streets it flanks?
Holly.
That Holly?
Yes. It's the north side of Holly.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments surrounding bulking en masse?
The real issue I have with Building 4 is that I would like to see a bike path that actually goes behind Building 4 and comes out to El Camino. So there is that area between Holly Street, and I know they stood up and said that they couldn't find a way to do that. But my feeling is that you could create a small bike path along the side of Building 4, along Holly Street, so that people didn't have to go out through the parking lot in order to get to El Camino with bikes.
And would you think that that would require an alteration of the building or just an alteration of the plan?
I don't know if it would. You know, I look at a bike path of being three, four feet, and I think that there's probably enough space in there to do that. I don't know if the building could be moved a couple of feet north to accommodate that somehow, but I think that it would be really nice to see a bike path that actually runs behind that and then out to El Camino rather than the sort of convoluted bike path that we see right now.
In the diagram.
Through the chair? Yes, please. You may look at Sheet C 2.2, which is the grading plan, and it shows the topography at the south end of Building 4.
Thank you. That helps a lot.
3.2?
Okay, so- So Scott, if I'm seeing you right, you'd like to see a bike path that comes kind of out that way? If I'm hearing you right? And what I'm seeing from the topography and what I'm remembering from the conversation at the last meeting was that maybe the grade is too steep. But Scott, what you're saying is that maybe they can adjust, remove the building north a little to accommodate that. Is there somebody that can answer that question?
Or dig into the hillside just a little bit and have a grade that comes down and have a nice little path that comes out to El Camino.
Because if that can happen, I don't think you're the only one that would like to see that. Is there somebody? I don't know who to direct the question to, though. Thank you, Paul.
Paul LeTerry again. I can partially answer it. There are existing redwoods on the slope bank. You'd lose all the existing trees. You'd have fairly good-sized retaining walls that you'd have to build that this path will be perched on top of. And we thought that it's, I don't think it really is physically possible to do it in the space that's there due to the vertical grade change that's there, the slope bank that's there, and to try to keep the existing trees, which we've tried to do there. There's existing redwoods, I believe, along both sides of Holly there that are planted in the slope bank, which is actually quite steep. So that's kind of the answer to it. That's why it hasn't been shown.
That makes sense. Thank you, Paul. And I guess then this would be, just to follow up on Scott's question then, could the building be moved north a little bit, Sherri, to accommodate that better? Building 4?
I think moving the building north would be also a challenge given that we have parking between Buildings 3 and 4 at grade with landscaping. And to move the building north would compromise the landscaping between those trees, I think. I'm just going to go back to the site plan here and show you the relationship of the buildings. Okay. So this is the parking between Buildings 3 and 4. And at this scale, it's a little bit difficult to see, but we have a landscape buffer between the parking and the buildings on both sides. And so that landscape buffer, I think, would be compromised if we move the building north.
And what does that parking serve between Buildings 3 and 4?
Guest parking for Buildings 3 and 4, yes.
Guest parking, thank you. At grade guest parking?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I guess then the question to the commission would be, is some sacrifice of some landscaping and guest parking to move the building a little north worth a bike path?
Yeah, it's also tightening down this view corridor that we have.
I see. It does also restrict the view corridor.
We kind of open up another can of worms there.
We talked about this last week, and I remember there was some discussion. I think Scott mentioned this as a possibility of trying to get like some stairs or something to get down to Old County Road. And the only thing that I heard that was a problem was that that would give like the regular public access to the building. I mean, could we, is that really the only problem? Because couldn't we solve that with like a gate or something? I also think that the bike paths that are being proposed are a problem. The proposal to cross, I think it was at Oak? To cross El Camino at Oak, as a bike rider, that seems crazy to me. And so that leaves the walking on the sidewalk and then crossing at Holly. I just really wish there was another alternative. So, I mean, is there any way to build something to get down to Holly?
Again, with the grades, it's really difficult. The other thing that we're hearing from the police department is that the back area behind the project here would be gated and fenced for security reasons. The police department actually doesn't want the general public, and I don't think the developer wants the general public behind those buildings. So that's something to consider, too. This bike path wouldn't be for the general public. It would just be for the residents.
Sure, and I think that's-
Yeah, that's right. So I'm just wondering, I mean, is there any way just, because it seems like this whole bike path problem is solved if you can figure out a way to either get down to Old County Road or to Holly or something out the side there.
Yeah, I think it would, as Paul was saying, I think it would involve actually switching back to accommodate the grades here because we're limited to 5%. Is that correct in the direction of travel?
Well, yeah, if you want to have it as a bike path, you want to keep it there. Otherwise, just to have handrails, it becomes a handicapped access ramp at that point.
Right. So I think-
Well, I mean, I'm not even saying it needs to be a ramp. I mean, most people, well, a lot of people can carry their bike down, you know, eight or nine, 10 stairs if necessary.
More than that.
Yeah, we could, I'm not sure. I'd have to get into the site accessibility questions. We get into some accessibility questions in new construction as to whether we can put steps in a new sidewalk or whether it has to be accessible because we're providing a path. And by providing a path, it would have to be an accessible path. So I think we're treading a fine line here. We'd have to be very careful about an accommodation that we're providing that's not accessible.
Okay. Then I guess let me just, any other possible solutions anybody can think of to ask either Paul or Sherri? Because the bike path does seem a little bit problematic.
Do bike paths actually follow accessibility rules, the same rules? Does a bike path follow the same guidelines?
It's not, you know, when you have these kinds of things, they're not exclusively for the use of one particular user. They're to be used by everyone. So you have sort of equal facilitation. So if you can roll on it, you need to be able to allow people to be able to roll on it or walk on it or be able to walk, you know, with crutches or whatever. So if you had just steps, I think it wouldn't be equal facilitation. You'd need quite a few steps to be able to try to make that break. And you need landings in it, and you need landings at the bottom. By the time you do it, you don't really have enough physical space to do it. The existing condition, there's a retaining wall at the bottom, and then there's a steep slope. So it's not just, it's not even just a slope to slope. It's a slope to a wall. So it's quite a few steps. I was just trying to see what the grade was. I haven't quite, I need some glasses to read some of it, so, just to check it. I'll check it out. I'll get them and check it out. But I think, I know we've looked at it before and it was, the problem gets into whether it's first physically possible and secondly, you have the legalistic aspect that Sherri was talking about, which we would think you'd have to make it an accessible route as well, which kind of turns it all into retaining walls.
Okay, so here's a question then that I'm sure is going to get me some groans. What about removing those units immediately flanking Holly? How much would that annoy you? To accommodate a bike path?
Probably means-
And I guess, Sherri, I guess that question's for you.
Can you repeat the question? I didn't quite hear it.
Yeah, I guess my question is, if we can't move the whole building a little bit to the north and we can't build a better bike path and we all kind of know what's going to happen with people who really do ride their bikes and how that bike path is going to work, how do we feel about? How much would it annoy you and disrupt you to remove those two units flanking Holly and Building 4?
It's two units.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah.
You can't just-
Well, no, they could put a hallway on the first floor. Basically, you go in through the back and you-
Or like, you know?
So-
Put it on a cliff, yeah.
Maybe I don't understand why you couldn't put a retaining wall on either side of the path, one up against the building and the other so that you wouldn't lose those trees. I'm still trying to, you're still trying to deal with the roots. Don't they go down?
They need it on the microphone. They're redwoods. They're relatively shallow-rooted, widespread trees, so you dig down, you cut all the roots.
Do they go down, not up? I mean, because it slopes down to those trees.
Well, you would be digging into the top of the slope and you'd be affecting the stability. Plus, there's just not enough physical width to do it.
Through the chair? Yes, please. Again, if you look at Sheet C 2.2, you'll see at the rear of the building, the ground elevation is around 27 feet in elevation along the emergency vehicle access. And then if you continue out into Holly, the grade at that point is 16.5 feet. So you have something of about 11 feet. And in terms of the width, you're dealing with an area that is about 20 feet wide. So you have almost a one-to-one-
Steps.
Slope, okay. I see.
So, I mean, it is tight. And if, in order to do it, you would have to, you know, I mean, be creative and talk about just putting a ground floor corridor within the building that comes out and eliminating the units on the ground floor than having them up above.
I know everybody-
What's that?
There's a retention. Oh, it says here there's a retention.
No, no, I'm sorry. That's a fair point, Ben. You're right. Fair point. Thank you. Okay. Well, do any of the other commissioners have any other options then? Or are you comfortable with moving forward with Building 4 and dealing with the bike path in some other way?
I don't know what choice we have.
I don't think everybody would want a bike path. It just doesn't seem like it's feasible, that's feasible, given the design right now.
And nobody's willing to lop off?
Yeah. The way you could solve a lot of these problems is to make it just a little bit smaller, make it actually fit rather than trying to jam in everything that you possibly can. And that's one of the concerns that I have with the entire project is that it's designed to maximize absolutely everything for the developer. And instead, what happens is the community loses out.
Okay. So do you have any suggestions for a condition that might address that?
Not one that I can see the other commissioners going for.
Okay. Well, if something comes to mind before we finish everything else, then come back to it. But at this point then, our discussion on Building 4 is set that it is what it is at this point. Okay. In that case, I'd like to go on to Building 3.
Let me get the-
And I believe Building 3, A 3.3, am I correct? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and Building 3 is the building with the largest back fourth floor, if I'm saying that correctly. And I do remember on our walking tour, that being something that visually was pretty obvious from the street. And I understand that the staff recommendations also include a reduction in the fourth floor in Building 3. Am I reading that right?
That's correct. We've, the draft condition requires that Building 3 at that top level on the eastern facade be set back in a manner that's similar to Buildings 1 and 2. And as indicated in the staff report, the response of the development team has been that it so reduces that level, there's only about two or three units that would be left. And it doesn't meet the cost-effective point for extending fire suppression, elevator, and those sorts of things. So it's very likely that they would end up removing the entire third floor and the loss of five units.
Sherri, can you do the same thing that you did with our previous building and show us on the screen what that would mean?
Sure.
If the eastern facade was set back as recommended?
Okay. So essentially, I think, just following up on Collette's point about the size of the fourth floor of Building 3, if we reduced it on the east side, would become so small that it would be infeasible to really make a fourth floor. So essentially, what we'd be looking at is taking the fourth floor off of Building 3 here. So the stretch here would be, instead of four stories, would be three stories, as it is, three stories on both ends right now.
Could you push the bulk of it towards the west?
It's a fairly narrow, it's a fairly simple building as it stands now. I'll go back to the plans for Building 3 here, and I think that might help clarify.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Currently, this is the fourth floor of Building 3 here currently. So essentially, if we were to lose these three units here, we'd be left with two units on the fourth floor. And there's really no way to, I mean, I guess you could move them a few feet, but I don't think it would have the visual impact change-
I see.
-that the other commissioners are looking for here. So I think, yeah, it's pretty balanced right now if, yeah.
So, just to paraphrase then, if we're interested in a reduction or a setback of the fourth floor- of the fourth floor on building three, what we're really looking at is a removal of the fourth floor.
Correct. That would be five units.
Okay. And that would mean five units gone. Okay. Any other questions for Sherri while she's up here, about building three?
Is the setback that staff's requesting specifically for the purpose of the character of the buildings?
I think it's the visual impact.
The visual impact?
It's the articulation, and it's the visibility. From the visual simulation that we had when we went on the walking tour, that corner of the building is one of the more visible ones from the residential areas to the east. So yes, it is a visual, a visual, a change to reduce visual visibility of that building.
Jesse, did, do you have a question?
No, no question. I'm just, I mean, are we...
Okay. Yeah, on, okay. So what do you guys think? Thank you, Sherri.
I'd like to, I think that's the only, that's the main building that I have the biggest issue with, actually. Just going through the walking tour, it is, it is pretty visible. So I'd like to see some sort of either further step back, and it seems like it's not economically feasible to do that, so...
Well, we could, of course, require that it's set back, and then leave it to the developer as to whether that's feasible, if they want to keep only a couple of units, or reduce the, the fourth floor entirely. I guess that would be up to them. Right? Am I, okay. I would also be in favor of that, Shannon?
My strong feeling is that we should reduce the height of buildings one, two, and three to three stories. I don't know how many times that, over the years, it's in the downtown design guidelines, for example, which actually don't even have anything to do with this project, that the project architecture should incorporate varying heights that are sensitive to the scale and massing of the east side residential areas, and accommodate and preserve significant views. To the people who live there, these are all significant views. And I hear the argument that, as you step back into the neighborhood, that these, these fourth floors sort of recede. It's simple physics, okay? As you get further back, you can see that fourth floor better, okay? So to say that it actually recedes is, is, you know, is kind of silly. The, as you move back into the neighborhood, those fourth floors become even more obvious to anybody that lives there. So, you know, the same thing I had with, with building eight. I believe that building one, two, and three should be three stories.
So if we're, therefore, you would be in favor of...
Absolutely, for, for building three, yes.
All right. I feel consensus. So, building three is, we're looking at supporting staff's recommendation, then, to...
And then let the developer... Let the developer decide if they want to build.
Is that fair?
It's fine. I mean, I, honestly, I wouldn't, I would not necessarily vote to reduce the size of the building, but, like, I don't feel strongly enough to advocate for it.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, I think, I think the consensus is, at least for the three of us, to, to support staff's recommendations. Scott would support removing the entire third floor, and you would keep it. So I think we've made our consensus at that point. Okay. That's building three. All right. Building one and two. Is that A 3.2?
Yes.
Okay. Is that only A 3.2? That's also A 3.1, correct? A 3.1 is building one. A 3.2 is building two. Okay. Well, we can take building two. So Scott, I know you, you just said that you are in favor of reducing the, the fourth floor on both of these buildings.
It flies in the face of all kinds of land use elements throughout the entire general plan. If, if, if this is going to happen, then you are not in compliance with the general plan. Okay? So essentially, this development has to be in compliance with the general plan. If it's not in compliance with the general plan, then you set up the ability to, to let somebody challenge it.
I think that's a fair opinion.
I assume, I assume staff disagrees with that.
I mean, I assume if it was. Yeah, it's a, it's an opinion.
Well, I think I'm probably going to need a little help from staff on the exact policies, but the, the finding you're making is consistency with the general plan, which is not compliance with the general plan. So it's a slightly different test. And there are a lot of policies in the general plan, many of which that Commissioner Marster has talked about, but there are, there are others that are designed to allow for some flexibility in the planning process. But that's up to you to make, is what findings you can make. That's one of the findings, is consistency with the general plan. And the, and remember, this is a recommendation on a, on a planned unit zoning. So it's, it's really a recommendation on a legislative act, and you're designing in the standards, but it's, it's important to look at what the findings are. Excuse me, what the general plan policies are in, in making that recommendation.
So I'm just going to ask a quick question, and that is, how many of you have actually looked at the consistency with the general plan, and read the general planned elements that actually take into consideration this project?
I think that's a fair question, Scott.
I absolutely have.
I have.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, that we've all done our homework, and that we're all looking at the same document.
Yep.
Okay.
So, to regroup, I think Scott has made the point that, that in his opinion, we would not be meeting certain land use elements as described in the general plan. Staff has made recommendations that disagree, and obviously, people up here have, and people in the community have, have had different recommendations. But I do think that's important to keep in mind going forward, because it certainly does open up a challenge. But let's focus again on buildings, building two and building one. With that conversation, is anybody interested in changing any of the articulation as far as the, the height and the massing for building two or building one?
I'm fine with building two.
I am as well.
Okay. And then, we're there. And building one? You said you're fine with building two, so I just want to check in with everybody.
I'm fine with building one as well.
You as well.
As am I.
Any additional comments on building one, since, other than that?
It's the, it's the edge of the project. I mean, if you look at the land use element that talks about scaling down to the edge of the project...
Why, yeah. Yep.
You essentially are, are ignoring that land use element.
On, yeah, and that's exactly why, why I brought that up.
You know, it's the same as building eight.
So, I'd say...
It was put in there for a reason.
Through the chair? Yes. If you wanted to take a look at that, there is both, the language is in Exhibit A to the resolution approving the planned development. There is specific language, again, draft for your consideration, addressing the issue of consistency, and addressing some of the, of the policies. It also incorporates the, there's analysis in the draft EIR, and then an additional extensive analysis in the response to comments documents, that goes through policy by policy. So that's, if, if there was concern about that, that's something that I would direct your attention to.
I do remember reading it, though, ah, there it is. Though finding it is, no, that's not the one. Whoever can find it first? You're talking Exhibit A from the original staff report?
I found it.
Okay, thank you. Isn't that the mitigation monitoring report?
It goes through all of...
Oh, I see. Thank you. I had it, and I lost it. Got it. Got it. Thank you.
It is Exhibit A, and it does go through land use elements, but not all of them.
Right. I don't know that that's exactly what... Collette, can you hold it up, so I can just see what you're...
Exhibit A.
It's not this.
Is it?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's Exhibit A to the PD. It's the second resolution.
Yep.
Exhibit A to attachment two.
To attachment two. And, and again, because there was...
This Exhibit A? ...the EIR, and then we take those limitations and incorporate them.
I have it over here. Thank you.
And then, the additional...
Yes.
...section of the response to comments.
Seven-page document?
Exhibit A.
And the, the last full paragraph on page one identifies where in both the EIR, the draft EIR, and then the response to comments documents, that there was extensive review of the policies.
Right.
And it's also in the errata. So there were three, three areas where there was policy by policy discussion.
Right. And of course, I, and of course, I have read that point, and I think, I think the point is, is that there's just some different disagreement, opinion-wise, on whether, whether it's consistent.
Yes. And going back to the EIR, we agreed that, that the EIR studied the project. We did not agree that the EIR made any of these findings at all.
Correct.
Okay? All we did is we said that the EIR studied the project.
Yep.
Okay? So we've really never had an actual discussion about any of these land use elements. What this is, is this is staff's recommendation...
Right.
...that, according to them, that it meets those elements.
Right.
We've never really sat down and said, well, does it really meet that, say, land use element 8.11 that talks about the varying heights?
Right.
And so essentially, what we're doing is we're bypassing a lot of the discussion that we should have had on the general plan, and just moving forward with the project.
I guess in, in my opinion, or at least through my perspective, because certainly those were, those were land use elements that I considered in looking at the project, and, for example, the varying heights, since you brought it up, Scott. I guess I do see the development as having some, some variation in height. Whether it's enough, I think is a, is certainly a matter of opinion, but I see that as, as complying.
And so in your opinion, this is sensitive to the east side residential neighborhood?
Well, I think the, I mean, if you look at the draft EIR, and I'm looking at 3.2-10, and I assume you're talking about land use element 8.11? Is that right? Discouraged abrupt changes in building scale?
Yep.
A gradual change, transition? So, you know, what the draft EIR indicated, and, I mean, I, I agree with this, is that, is that the structures are buffered from residents east by the existing elevated Caltrain tracks. So, I mean, that's, I mean, as I understand it, I'm not a land use expert, and the idea about these gradual changes is so that you don't basically plunk down a, a three-story building next to a house. And I don't really see us plunking down a three or four-story building immediately next to a house. Now, I know that reasonable minds can differ about that, and I totally get that, but, I mean, I just, I, I sort of disagree with the idea that we didn't think about this, or we didn't look at it, or we're bypassing anything. I mean, I, I read that, you know, I saw it, I, I agree with it, and you disagree, and that's, that's okay.
And I wasn't saying that we didn't, didn't look at it. I was saying we really didn't have those discussions about this. Okay? So we, we really didn't sort of look at those land use elements, and, and...
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I guess just reasonable minds can differ. I mean, I think we've had, I don't know, 15 hours of meeting, heard probably 10 hours of public comment about, you know, the size of the building, and the impact on the, on the east side, and, and others. I mean, it's not, this is, this is not a, I mean, this is not something being heard for the first time.
Right. And, and I guess my question is, really, what significant changes have been made to the project in order to...
Seems like a lot, to me.
...address that.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like there have been a lot of changes to the project. There hasn't been a lot of recognition of that, but the project that we see now is, is very different than the project when it first came to us. I mean, not necessarily perfect for everyone, but there have been changes made, I mean, lots of changes. Every time we, we raise something, we get a response of some kind. I mean, it's either a change, or an explanation as to why that won't work. So, I mean, again, that doesn't mean this, this project is, is perfect, or that every single request that's been made has been addressed, but changes have been made.
Okay. And you said reasonable minds can differ.
Reasonable minds can differ. Yeah.
Now that we have gone through all the buildings, and have addressed the really important issue that I think there's, you know, clearly some disagreement on, as far as the bulk and mass of the buildings, I wanted to see if anybody, if we've all felt that we have discussed this enough, and that we've reached enough of a consensus to move on to other parts, other parts of the PD plan.
I mean, the only thing is, I may be missing something, because I am not an expert in land use. Is there a reason for that, for that, that transition that's required by LU 8.11, other than to try and provide some buffering to neighboring uses? I mean, is that, is that the rationale for it? Is there, is there any other rationale? Because I just don't see anything immediately, like, I would look at reducing building one on the edges if there was something next to it.
That looks exactly...
But there's nothing, but there's nothing next to it, so I don't know why we would reduce it unless, you know, there was, if someone could help me with that. I mean, is there any other reason for the reduction, other than to, to sort of buffer it from, from adjacent uses?
Well, that's correct. The, the building was reduced from four stories to three stories along Old County Road, but I think the initial, the original intent of that policy was in consideration of two properties next to each other, as opposed to properties or zones that were separated by right-of-bays, or other physical characteristics, like the berm or railroad tracks. So that, that was the initial intent of that, was, hey, if you've got a four-story building next to a single-family house, you should do more to, you know, make it transition up. So that was the initial intent. As you noted, the physical characteristics and distances, and, and the, the condition there is, is different, really, I think, than the original intent of that particular policy. Going back, again, to the buildings, to kind of circle back, yes, these buildings have been stepped down, in particular, to lower the buildings, so they're less visual from, or they're less visible from the east side neighborhood.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other final comments on building height and mass before we move forward? Okay. Let's go ahead and move forward into something we've already talked about a lot during this conversation, and during our previous conversation, and that was landscaping. I'm hoping we can wrap up the landscaping discussion, since we did talk about it at length at the last meeting, and we've dabbled in and out of it during our conversations about the buildings. So, does anybody have anything on landscaping that they want to address at this point? And if not, I have a couple of things.
I would just observe, we asked about the five years. Staff came back and said five years was enough. I still believe that, I mean, the fact, the uncertainty around electrification argues for a longer period. So, we're hearing 2019. That's six years. I think that there's a nexus for at least 10. And so, I mean, I would like to see the maintenance of that landscaping increased to at least 10. So, that would be my view. Otherwise, I mean, I'm open to anyone who has any suggestions on increasing landscaping. More trees is always better than less trees. But I do want to see the maintenance of that extended.
I also had that written under my conditions.
I did as well.
Cannon?
I agree.
I agree. Scott?
I think the length is what we should talk about, probably, on that particular...
I think that I have several issues with landscaping. The first is the idea that the city takes on the responsibility of that landscaping. Okay? From my perspective, there's absolutely no way a city that's just dealt with a $4 million structural deficit should be taking on the responsibility of maintaining landscaping on a private property or a property that is owned by the Joint Powers Board or Caltrain that actually has its own landscaping division, is my guess, in order to deal with all the property that they have up and down the rail corridor. So, for us to do that and, you know, for staff to suggest that we should be taking on responsibility for any of the landscaping of this project from anywhere south of the border all the way up to the Taco Bell site, just to me, it seems to... If we're going to take on the responsibility there, I've got a whole neighborhood that's got trees that are in between the curb and the sidewalks that they would love the city to take on the responsibility for also.
And would you be looking, then, at a condition...
Absolutely. Under no condition should the city take on the responsibility for maintaining any of these trees.
The berm.
On the berm, on the flat.
Or South...
Any piece of this property.
I would... I agree absolutely with Scott. And if it were legal, I would be absolutely on board. But our council has told us that there has to be... I mean, we're talking about an area that is not on the project property. I mean, we can make them... What council has told us is that we can make them maintain the landscaping on their own property. But with respect to landscaping that is not on their property, and we don't, we can't make the Joint Powers Board do anything. They're not an applicant. So, we're basically looking at making the developer do it. And I would... If we could legally do it, I agree with you. But our council is telling us that we can't. So, I'm not in a position to put a condition that we're being told is not legal.
Is that correct? Legally, we cannot have the developer take care of that?
Well, what I said last week, and I'll try to be clear and concise, is that I think there's a legal issue as to whether or not we can require, for the life of the project, that this applicant somehow guarantee that the landscaping on the berm that's owned by the Joint Powers Board be maintained. Because I think that's the one scenario is there could be a lot of things happening to this right-of-way over the next 100 years that we can't even contemplate that would be inconsistent with that. And the fact is, we have an agreement with the Joint Powers Board right now that allows the city to maintain the landscaping. And there's pros and cons to that. I mean, sometimes you could say, "It's good the city has control of it. We have an agreement with the Joint Powers Board. We maintain the landscaping so we can control what it looks like." And if we didn't have, if we tried to put a condition on the Joint Powers Board, for example, even though I think it is legally questionable, all we would have is the agreement to enforce that condition. We wouldn't have the right to go on the property to actually do it. So, there is some pros and cons to that, to the analysis of that. But the main point is, the condition of approval on this just calls for an agreement. You have some flexibility to determine the general parameters of the agreement. If you have some facts that were concerned... I think there's some supplemental information about the time it takes, the type of landscaping here to mature and become self-sufficient. I think you've seen some evidence of the landscaping. Not all of it was successful, but from those great separation, some has succeeded. So, the idea is, the agreement is to design the type of landscaping that we know will succeed and for a time period that will be, will establish it. And, yeah, I see the point. The city, maybe the city shouldn't bear the cost of that. The only alternative staff and I were talking about is, you know, the way landscaping and lighting is sometimes maintained is through assessment districts. And that's not something that we've done in San Carlos before. We've just put conditions on projects. And I'm very comfortable with a reasonable time-limited restriction or requirement that the landscaping get established. Beyond that, I think we need to have the factual information that would show that it needs to be 10 years or 20 years or whatever it needs to be. We need to have the right evidence in the record to enforce something like that as a condition.
So, looking at the 10-year growth of a lot of these trees, I actually walked along the rail corridor. There are some six-foot trees that are 10 years old. Never been replaced. Never had anything done to them. So, to me, 10 years doesn't seem to be long enough for the maintenance of those trees. If they've essentially grown a couple of feet in 10 years, then, and we only require them to maintain them for 10 years, that seems to conflict with the idea of, you know, maintaining those trees.
And I think that's something that we can cover in the agreement or the landscaping, the actual selection of the species of the trees. That I think I know which trees you're talking about that are scraggly and did not succeed. They might have, it might have just been a poor selection of species. But you can direct us to pick species that are appropriate for the berm that will succeed there and incorporate those into the agreement.
So, just to... So, Greg, if I'm hearing you correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that even suggesting 10 years is beyond where your comfort limit is?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, okay. Good. I'm glad you're not.
You said 10 or 20 years.
I'm just...
Or however many years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or however many years.
But, I mean, let me give you a concrete example under the agreement. Because remember, the condition calls for an agreement that would maintain it for five years. So, let's just go with that. If you, in order to make the findings of approval, you say that, "I'm not assured that the landscaping will be established in five years." You could pick another date. You could even direct us to put in the agreement. And if the landscaping has deteriorated, we will give you, it needs to be taken care of before the 10-years runs or something like that, some ability to direct the city and the, through this agreement, that the landscaping will be replaced. So, you kind of extend it out a little bit. But we just... So, I think there is a factual basis for saying 10-year landscaping. And then, in year eight, for example, there'll be a review of the landscaping to make sure it's thriving. And the trees that aren't thriving will be replaced with appropriate species. You could put that type of stuff in the agreement. You just... Because we can't, we're not at that stage of the project where we're going to look at every little tree and figure out what tree is going to thrive at this spot or that spot. We're just asking for an agreement that's a condition of, part of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Is this an agreement that has to be agreed to by the Joint Powers Board since the planting will be done on their property? It sounds like in the past, when the city... And, correct me if I'm wrong, the city actually does the flat and Samtrans or Caltrain or the Joint Powers Board, to me, they're all the exact same thing. And which is another bone of contention because, you know, to me, every single one of those organizations reports up to the Joint Powers Board or the same CEO. So, to actually say that they're different organizations is kind of ridiculous. But...
Caltrain reports to the Joint Powers Board? That would probably be...
Reports to the same CEO who reports to the joint... Yeah, the Joint Powers Board oversees both organizations.
Okay. Well, let's get some clarification on your question first.
First of all, with respect to, the city has the right to maintain and replace landscaping along that area. So, the existing agreement would allow us to plant landscaping. The condition of approval recognizes that there are some safety issues. And so, there would be a consultation over the placement of the trees and the types of trees to make sure that it's done in a way that maintains the sightlines for the signals and those sorts of things. So, it's not that we just can go in and do whatever we want, but we do have an agreement that allows the city to install landscaping and maintain landscaping. But there's, we need to consider some other factors such as...
Is that along the flats or along the berm?
Along the berm.
Along the berm. So, who's responsible for landscaping on the flats?
When you're talking within the project?
Yeah.
Okay. That is the responsibility of the developer. And one of the conditions of approval is that they have to enter into a maintenance, an agreement for the long-term maintenance of that. I can find you that condition number.
Even the property south of...
He's talking about south of Arroyo.
Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Chair. So, south of Arroyo, the flat area is Samtrans. And the berm is the city.
And has been all along?
Yes.
Okay. So, we need to have a real serious agreement with Samtrans because right now, as we all know, it's in horrible shape and has been for at least 15 years.
Well, I would agree with that. And so, let's go ahead and talk about conditions, then. First, I was hearing that to... So, two things seem to have come up. And again, please redirect me if I'm wrong. One is to increase the developer time responsible. And we're talking about berm trees, not necessarily south of Arroyo, to 10 years.
I would encourage it, yeah. I would encourage it to be more like 20 or 25.
I had 25, actually.
20, 25? Okay. I'd be just fine with that.
I mean, especially with the maturity of trees, you know?
Yeah.
Electrification project, you might have to take down a couple of trees and replant some trees. I think that's reasonable, 25 years.
Would there be... I would love, I really like the idea of something that has a potential earlier end. If the trees are already established and we've gotten through electrification, would there be a way to do something similar to what you were suggesting, Mr. Rubens, where it was 10 years, but in the event at year eight, there were trees that were not established, that we could then extend beyond 10 years with respect to those particular trees? Could we do something like that?
I think that's consistent with what I was suggesting, that we have the ability to make sure the landscaping as planned does thrive as planned. Let's put it that way.
What if you were to do, rather than 25 years, what if you were to do 10 years, reevaluated at year nine, and that any tree that is not established at year nine would have to be replaced with a new tree and maintained for an additional 10 years?
And you would suggest that...
What happens if after nine years, those trees?
Because you think that makes more legal sense?
I just think that there's more nexus to the project.
More nexus.
I agree with that.
That's what I was asking.
That's my thought. I just don't want... I also, I'm trying to be practical, and perhaps I shouldn't say this out loud. I don't, you know, I don't see the developer having a problem with 10 years versus five. But the more years we go and the more expensive it gets, the more rationale the developer has to challenge the nexus to the condition. So, I just... When I came up with 10, and if someone can, you know, come up with a reason for 25 other than we would like them to do it for 99, because I would like them to do it for 99. But I selected 10 based on the...
I'll go with 99.
Yeah. I mean, I selected 10 based on the idea that we have some trees out there that are, you know, 10 years old, that aren't in very good condition, combined with the fact that, you know, we're being told that electrification could require trees to be removed and that we're going to have a better idea in about 2019. So, that's where I came up with 10. If someone can come up with a rationale for 25 that's supported by the facts that we have, I'm on 25 because I would love 99, but I just don't...
2040 high-speed rail. 2039 high-speed rail. It gives you, it's 25 years out.
And I think Jeff...
Can I just make a point on this timeline? It just occurs to me that, you know, we're really not... It's not really the developer that's going to be paying for something way out in the future. It's going to be the owner, whoever the owner of the project is at the time. It's probably going to be reflected in the rent somehow. I mean, it's just going to be, it's just going to be a requirement that goes to successors. So, whatever you impose is going to, you know, within reason, it's going to really be imposed on the project. It's not really the developer. The developer's going to fund the initial planting, and then that's going to succeed to whoever owns the building, the project after, or the pieces of the project.
And my goal is to find the least amount that we can require and come to as close to a guarantee as we can that the trees that we are expecting are going to be there and are going to survive and are going to thrive. So...
But then you want it 99 years.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, 99 years would be the most conservative. And what I'm looking actually is for the most aggressive. You know, that we can be reasonably sure... 99 is to be absolutely sure. I would like to be reasonably sure that the trees that we're expecting are going to be there. And I don't think we need 99 years to be reasonably sure. We're being told five years are enough. The uncertainty we have, we have uncertainty about high-speed rail. We have some, well, I'm going to say electrification. We have some uncertainty around that. And then, you know, we have the experience that, you know, trees that are planted on the berm haven't always been successful, although we had a long discussion on our tour about those trees. And the landscape architect indicated that they just planted the wrong trees during our tour. So, you know...
Okay.
Okay. So, then...
Can I, one more thing here? So...
Same topic about...
Same topic.
Thank you.
Okay. I look at this and I go, "Okay, we're not going to lower the buildings. Okay? We can't guarantee the trees on Old County Road. Okay? We saw the East Side connect. So, maybe there's going to be trees there. Maybe they're not." You heard the...
I heard Brian.
You heard Brian essentially say, "We're going to try, but we can't guarantee anything. Okay?" Now, we're hearing the same thing of the trees on the berm. "We're going to try and put them up. We can't guarantee anything." So, for me, it was a balance between one of two things. Okay? It's either plant enough trees so that you essentially shield the visual impact of the project or you lower the height. Okay? So, didn't get the height. So, now, we're not, it sounds like we're not going to get the trees. Okay? Not going to get enough of an impact from those trees because things are going to change. There's nothing guaranteed. There's only a few trees along the backside of the project that are going to attempt to shield that project a little bit from the neighborhood. So, for me, since the height, they're getting the height. Let's make them deal with the landscaping so that we can actually deal with the visual impact. Because to me, that's another piece of the general plan that we're, again, failing the community on.
Well, and I think you made the point at the last meeting that the landscaping indeed was important for visual impact and that if it couldn't be guaranteed to a certain extent...
And all I'm hearing is reasons why we can't do it instead of reasons why we can actually put... actually put in landscaping. We can actually visually buffer this project from the east side neighborhood. That's why I'm looking at the 25 years or the 99 years.
I have to say, I think three of us are on board with 25, and if we're way out of line, maybe that's something we can kick up the road.
I'm going to with 10. I think that the trees would be established in 10, and then with some provision that at year eight or nine, that if their trees aren't thriving, that they will be repanted and then guaranteed for 10 years. Because I think that the trees will know if they're thriving or not, so we'll know if they're going-
I think 25 makes sense, particularly because of the high-speed rail and the 2040. So I am good with that.
25 is exactly what I was thinking, so.
Yep.
Okay. So that is where our three to two consensus is. Thank you, everybody, for your input, and we will move on to the next-
Say, I really do like 25 years, I just, I'm not sure if it's supportable.
Right.
So, trees are good. Trees, like trees.
We'll move on to the next condition surrounding landscaping. Scott, you had something?
I've got lots of conditions.
Okay. How about I skip around, Scott, real quick, and see if anybody else has anything specific to landscaping that we didn't already address at the last meeting?
I think we talked about 14, Section F, reading 24 months, I guess, in the planning of the trees. I wanted to start at 12 months, I think it was in the- when we talked about it at the last meeting?
Yes, yes, I do.
We had questions about when, from what point?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I thought that we- didn't we kind of reach consensus that we wanted the trees to basically be planted at the time that the buildings are occupied?
Before occupancy, right?
Basically, before the- any given building is occupied, that the landscaping that relates to that building needs to be in?
I think that's where we landed with, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think we had basic consensus on that. I don't-
And through the chair-
Essentially require that-
Yes, please. There was draft language provided in the supplemental material that provided you with language to be added to Section B, that the completion of the landscaping, both around the buildings as well as in the portion of the berm to the east of the building, had to be done before occupancy. So there's draft language in the material you received tonight, if you want to add that language.
On page three, am I looking at the right thing?
Yeah, it's page three of five, number three.
Why is it just building one, two, three, and eight?
You can make it be whatever you want.
Yeah, because I have some additional landscaping that I'd like to suggest.
All right. You can further modify it. These are only drafts.
All right.
But to Scott's question, why was it one, two, three, and eight and not four, five, six, and seven?
But basically, the area for buildings five, six, and seven is because you have the additional height and the station and things. But if you feel that it's important that the landscaping in that area is also critical, again, part of it was the discussion in the meetings was- the focus was really Holly and building eight, but you can make it be all of all eight buildings.
Yeah, definitely.
I think it should read, "Planted before occupancy of each building," and get rid of the one, two, three, and eight.
I'm fine with that. Anybody else?
Fine with that language.
Of each building. Got it. I know that- I'm trying to see any other thing on landscaping. I know that Scott and I both wanted to talk a little bit about south of Arroyo, but Scott, I'll let you-
Before we-
Before we get there.
So the 25 years, is the developer taking care of the responsibility-
Or the project owner at that point?
The project owner of the landscaping, both onsite and offsite?
On the berm, I think is what we agreed to.
Okay. So that way, the city is not responsible for any of that landscaping?
Correct.
On the berm.
On the berm.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so let me go through my list here.
Okay.
Before we leave the project itself, we haven't really talked about sort of requiring additional landscaping east of building eight, okay? So there is a condition here.
Staff, put up the overall plans with little landscaping.
East of building eight.
Okay, so what do you mean east of? Do you mean like-
He means flanking the east side, right?
On the berm?
On the berm of-
On the berm of building eight. Because there is- there was no plan from the developer-
Between the building and the berm, or between the Old County Road and the track? Where?
Building and the berm.
On the berm.
What did you-
On both sides of the berm?
On both sides of the berm.
Okay.
Okay. So they showed pictures where they said, "If you put landscaping in here, that could So you see all the spaces in between those trees?
Yes.
Okay? And the, I believe they're redwoods on the west side of the tracks, which probably haven't been maintained very well because they probably haven't gotten the watering that they need. I know that the ones on the east side of the berm actually have been watered. I go by and see them being watered all the time. But I think that there needs to be additional landscaping planted in here because from the neighborhood, you're going to see these buildings through those trees.
Now, is that the same suggestion that Paul had made earlier about putting additional poplars?
Additional trees in there, yes. Either additional poplars or whatever's appropriate in there, okay? On both sides of the tracks. Because if you put them in between the existing plants there, what you end up with is multiple layers of landscaping between the residential neighborhood and the building. And so you can- you can- you don't have to expect that one complete solid wall of landscaping is going to sort of disguise the building. If you have multiple layers, you essentially look at trees in a forest rather than the building.
So you'd like to make a condition where-
Well, there is a condition that was suggested by- on page three, number five.
I see it. And you'd like to adjust the language here, Scott?
Yes, because essentially what it's talking about, okay, so, "The lands shall be substantial plans." So when you look at the condition, the B part of it, "Additional trees to improve screening of building eight from the residential area to the east of Old County Road shall be added. The additional trees shall be the maximum feasible within the mixed-use project," okay? "And may also include additional trees on the east side of the railroad berm." What I would like to see that say is that it will include, and let's pick a number because they've picked a number of 70 north of Holly, and I picked a number of 40 additional trees, and it doesn't necessarily- not all of them would go here, but I would say, based on the numbers that are looking there, I would say you're probably looking at an additional 20 to 30 trees to fill in the gaps between these trees that are sitting here. So I would say probably an additional 30 trees on either side of the railroad berm.
So I guess my question then at this point is, maybe my question is to Paul, is that Fix it. No, I'm just kidding.
The number of levels that question gets to, though, feasibility of it is something I can't tell you whether it's completely feasible or not to add some random quantity of trees that you've come up with in terms of, you know, interplanting. The idea that you could plant between trees that are there now, that sounds like it's possible. With redwoods, not as desirable, planting them as close together as that, but it's not impossible to do that. Whether it's actually possible in the broader sense of the project is something I'm not 100% sure I could tell you that standing here. But, you know, whether you could plant another tree between a tree that's out there, you know? If it works with the train considerations-
The electrification issues.
You know, you could certainly plant a tree there.
Okay. Scott, did you have any questions for Paul at this point? So I guess then my question would be, I see your point, and I think taking out may also is an easy fix, to change it to will. I guess I just don't want to put anything in there that isn't going to-
Yeah, I mean, if you put will include additional trees, two is additional trees. Okay? So unless you give them an actual number, or you say the maximum feasible or something like that, then it's very easily-
How about the maximum feasible, then?
I can live with maximum feasible.
I'm fine with that.
That'd be good for me.
Okay, so essentially, looking at that, the landscape architect could potentially put in 30 trees.
Well, I mean, that would obviously be-
Obviously, they would come back to us with a landscape plan.
Right.
Okay? Which we can approve or reject.
Okay.
And those need to be in place prior to occupancy of building eight.
Yeah, because we had already said that we wanted plantings done prior to occupancy overall.
If it says shall be the maximum feasible, then doesn't it have to be the maximum feasible? Wouldn't we then take the discretion away from the city to-
I was saying will, but yeah.
I just, I would love to let the city work this out, only because, and again, reasonable minds can differ. I look at the trees as they exist behind building eight. They look kind of nice.
Building eight.
I mean, they look kind of nice. Now, other people, like the residents, who it affects more and look at them every day, maybe they do want a tree in between every tree, and maybe that is feasible, and maybe that's the maximum feasible, and maybe the city agrees. But I'd like to figure out a way to provide some discretion to the city to work that out with the developer, rather than requiring the maximum feasible.
That's why it comes back to us for a landscape plan.
Does it? If it's- if the condition is maximum feasible?
Yes, it comes back to us to make the decision of whether that's a maximum feasible because we have to approve all the landscape plans. We have the discretion.
Yes, please. Through the chair, as we've looked at the wording, we're coming down to the third line, we're taking may out and making it be will, and we're adding additional trees on the west and the east side of the railroad berm. And the goal isn't to put as many trees in there as possible. The goal is to completely screen building eight.
Yeah.
That's the goal. So maybe we should say to-
Flatter trees.
The trees, the goal here is, we add languages to completely screen building eight from the east neighborhood to the extent feasible.
I could live with that.
Sounds good.
Yep. I'm sorry, Jesse, did you have a question?
Perfect.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Thank you very much, Collette.
Oops, sorry.
Okay.
Now you're throwing my stuff?
All right, any other landscaping issues, not south of Arroyo issues yet, that we'd like to get consensus on and move forward?
Yeah, so one of the other questions I have is the landscaping that actually sits behind buildings. Let me see if I can find it here.
Which buildings?
Buildings five, six, and seven.
Can staff put up the best diagram possible to illustrate landscaping between five, six, and seven? Or behind five, six, and seven?
So in addition, I'd like to see some additional landscaping back behind five, six, and seven.
On the berm?
It's not the berm. It's actually, the berm is not really a berm at that point. It's actually concrete blocks stacked up.
Ah, yeah.
And so the heights of these buildings are actually going to stick up above that, and that is what you are going to see from our park.
I see.
Okay? And so instead of seeing buildings from the park, I would love to see more trees.
Okay, so you're thinking the planting right behind that row that I'm kind of looking at?
There seems to be a tremendous amount of space between the buildings and the blocks there, okay?
That are bike paths that we're talking about?
No, it can't be a bike path because you have the same problem of the stairs down there.
Sorry, yeah, five, six, seven, got it.
There just seems to be a lot of empty space there that would be perfect for planting trees in order to be able to sort of screen-
Are there emergency egress issues behind building five, six, and seven that would prevent more planting, Sherry? Or Paul? Or whoever can best answer that question?
I can start. What appears to be lots of spaces filled with utilities. There are some access issues, there's fiber optic lines, there's other utility lines that are there that prevent trees from being planted, or we'd have them on there. We added, when we went through the last iteration and added a significant number of trees to the back, that was sort of the whole dance that we had to do is to get it, is to get it so that there's space between the trees and the building, just for allowing for growth, and also clearance between the underground utilities. And they don't run straight through. You know, they're not, they move, you know, and there's some that cross. And we had, in fact, the ability to get extra trees planted was, some utilities were removed, were going to be removed from that spot to allow for some of this tree planting to happen. But fiber optic cable, for example, isn't, is not touchable, and it sort of wanders around relative to the buildings. I think it shows on some of the civil drawings, you can see it.
So can you talk to Brian and maybe find some magic trees like he did for the east side?
No, there are magic trees. There are magic trees.
Or places where, when you actually get in there, that the utilities will allow you to potentially plant trees there?
Well, there's, I mean, right now, we have plans that show where the utilities are, and there's clearances that you need to have, so we drew the clearances, and that's kind of where we came up with the tree scheme that's here now.
Basically, you're saying you can't put any more trees in there?
I think that's what I should be saying, more directly.
Yes, you can't put any more trees in there, that if you could, you would, but you can't.
Right. Because I kind of agree with your philosophy that more trees would be better here. We're not, you know, blind to the idea. We've tried to get as many trees into the spaces as we think can be done, given all the various criteria that need to be considered.
Are there other-
Can we leave it open so that if you find additional trees, that you, if you find additional locations for trees, that you will go ahead and plant additional trees?
Oh, I don't know if you're asking me for permission for that.
If they can find additional places for trees, can we encourage them to plant additional trees?
Sure, is that, can we do that with some proper language?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then, yeah, I'd be amenable to that.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
Okay. Thank you very much, Paul.
You don't ask, you never get it.
That's true.
I have one landscaping thing.
Yes.
I don't know if it's possible or not, but what we're doing in our HOA is we're putting in the bubblers instead of sprinklers from a water conservation standpoint. Is that in the plan? Okay.
Good. I guess one more. And that is the idea of the street, the neighborhood, the Tree Neighborhood Improvement Fund. And so the developer has suggested $25,000 to be put to plant trees throughout the neighborhood to sort of deal with the fact that they can't put very many trees within the areas that have utilities.
Right.
And so my suggestion would be- And so my suggestion would be because of the area behind here having so many utilities, maybe we could increase the amount of that fund from 25 to $50,000. And still making sure that whenever a tree can't be planted, that the additional money that would have gone into planting that tree goes into the Neighborhood Tree Fund also.
I want to make sure that I understand the Neighborhood Tree Planting just a little bit more because I did, of course, read the Neighborhood Tree Fund and the money, but I've also read 70 trees. And I guess I want to understand, I want to make sure I'm thinking about the right thing. So if I can get clarification on that?
Certainly. The concept there was, just I think as Commissioner Marsters noted, that for instance where it says 70 trees on the berm, if those trees didn't number 70, then the surplus that would go to the Neighborhood Improvement Fund. And then those trees, that fund could be used to plant trees in the neighborhood, either on private property or on streets that are perpendicular to Old County Road. So that was the intent.
There was also an initial $25,000 that was going to go into that fund.
Right, it was a sort of seed money to start the fund, the 25,000. The trees planting irrigation is about anywhere from, I don't know, Paul can correct me on this, but I think it's around 13, 12, $1,300 a tree to get a tree planted.
Okay, thank you very much, Al.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess then the question for the commission is increasing that Neighborhood Improvement Fund, something you guys are willing to do? And do you think the number is an appropriate number that Scott suggested?
I think it should stay at the seed money of 25,000, but if there are trees that aren't planted as far as the 70, that money should be added to the fund?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. Basically, that's how it's written.
I also agree.
I wouldn't mind increasing the fund actually, but 50, 50 seems like a lot. However, there is consensus the other way. Could I maybe suggest 35 and see if we all have the same exact answer? And if that's true, I'll stop. But if you guys would agree to 35, maybe we can go there.
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify that before you continue. I just want to note that this was agreed to by the developer. Again, there's a nexus issue there.
Okay.
But in discussions with Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association, there was a desire to have some kind of a Neighborhood Improvement Fund set up for neighborhood beautification efforts or trees. And so the developer agreed to do this.
So then there might not be nexus for my proposal then to?
I think that there may need to be an acceptance on the developer's part.
I see. Thank you for that.
I think the reason I would suggest that it would be increased is the area south of Holly that was really designed for north of Holly. And when you look at the area south of Holly between, behind building five, six, and seven, and the absence of the additional trees that could go there because of the utilities, that's sort of the justification for increasing that fund to deal with planting additional trees on the south portion of, south of Holly and in particular at L'Oriola Park where those trees could be used to shade things like playgrounds and areas that would be used by the residents of the new development.
Greg, did you have a thought on that?
I think those are laudable goals, but I don't know. I'd like to be able to tie still the project to the proposed condition. What we have and what we've done over the years in San Carlos is when there was a community concern, we realized this issue of a nexus and then we asked the developer, would they voluntarily agree to this type of a condition? And in this case, I think this is the amount the developer agreed to do. I don't know if the developer's willing to address that concern and agree to an additional amount. That might be a question you could ask the developer. But this is one of those things where we normally do not require improvements from developments in remote properties or city parks or anything. We don't have an ordinance that requires that. We don't have, this is project specific. Developer agreeing to meet a community concern, but not something that there really is a nexus to. We just, we haven't, in these types of situations, established a nexus and we don't have specific requirements. And staff can correct me on that.
I just also wanted to point out that the revised wording that's in the supplemental material on page four doesn't limit, I don't know that it was the intention to limit it, but it says to the rear of buildings one through eight, so the 70 trees are not restricted to north of Holly in the proposed alternative wording here.
Okay.
So there could be planting done out of those 70 trees in that area to the extent that.
We've been told that they can't plant trees behind five, six, and seven.
Not on the west side of the berm, but on the east side of the berm, which is where this is intended.
The east side of the berm for building five, six, and seven is all street. So you can't, you can't actually plant trees there.
I stand corrected. Well, that might be why, that's why we put it in Holly.
Yes, yes. And the other thing that might go a long way towards this is my understanding that in the mitigation meetings that the developer was willing to pay considerably more than the $25,000 for a Neighborhood Tree Fund. So I would be surprised if they were willing to, if they were unwilling to go to the $35,000.
Well, I guess then that would be the question because I don't want to push any of the commission to do anything you guys don't want to do. If you're comfortable with 25, I get it. I do agree with Scott. I think it could go higher. But it sounds like we would need to have the developer come up and agree to it. That's what it sounds like if I'm.
I think it would be better to let staff negotiate that with them in between this meeting and the next meeting.
Goodness gracious, okay. All right, well, why don't we hold on that then? Scott, was that, were those your only landscaping, non-south of Arroyo issues that you had?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, at this point then, unless anybody else has landscaping, south of Arroyo issues, I would like to take a five-minute break and then eat up your protein bars and come on back. Thanks, guys, five minutes.
I ate my protein bar all right.
That a boy.
Let me just make sure. Minimize. This is fine. I am. Okay. Unless you go back.
Do you have coffee?
I do, would you like some?
I've had coffee. You've not been drinking coffee, but what did you drink?
We've got connections.
Lisa brought me coffee. Would you, would anybody else like?
Are you serious?
Staff likes them.
Well, they know I like.
You know what, that's it.
You want some water?
No, it's fine.
Would you like pistachios?
I don't want anything anymore.
Would you like the vitamins?
I don't want anything.
Okay. All right, well, thank you everybody for coming back. We'll go ahead and thank you for not leaving. We had just finished up for, I would say for the most part, on our landscaping discussion. And I understand that staff has a set of conditions, or has conditions that you guys can put up on the screen and we can edit as we do if that becomes necessary through the meeting. Great, so just make, okay, just making sure. What I'd like to do is move the order around a little bit than what I said and talk about south of Arroyo first because it is landscape adjacent. And that just seems like a natural next point to talk about. As you guys will see from the supplemental information that staff provided, there is a very tiny landscaping plan. And I'm wondering if staff has that available to put up on the screen for south of Arroyo.
No, we don't, we don't have that for the screen.
Okay, thank you all. But everybody has it in front of them, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
For the supplemental information? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I have that.
So my concern with the landscaping south of Laurel is, south of Arroyo is twofold. One, when is it going to be landscaped? Is it going to be landscaped before occupancy of some of the buildings? Is, are we going to wait until the year 2040 when high-speed rail comes along? There is no, nothing that suggests that we're actually have a particular date by which that landscaping is going to be put in place. And we've already waited 15 years when it was supposed to have been landscaped and kept weed-free. So, you know, for me, we need to have a landscaping plan and a full landscaping plan, not just for down to Britain. But I understand that you're going to do similar things for the rest of the corridor there and a date by which that landscaping is going to be in place.
Is that, is that something that we can do? Put a date on, on the landscaping for south of Arroyo?
Yes.
Okay, great. Scott, what date were you, were you thinking of entertaining as a condition?
I don't know whether to tie it to the multimodal station or whether to tie it to the development.
That makes sense, actually.
But I, I have a tendency to want to tie it to the multimodal station. The other, the-
That makes sense.
Yes. So that's one. I would like to say upon completion of the multimodal station that we should also have be completed the landscaping to the-
Area south of Arroyo?
All the way to the city line.
The city line.
That's where, that's the project plan area. Okay? That was the original project plan area that came out of resolution 2003-79 was right from the beginning here, it says, "The following goals and policies shall apply to the area within the city of San Carlos, south of the Taco Bell restaurant, southern property line to the San Carlos-Redwood City border, between the existing railroad tracks and El Camino Real. This area shall hereafter be referred to as the project area." That is the area we are supposed to be dealing with.
And the area that we have here is to Britain and a little bit south, at least on the drawings. Okay.
I want to see a complete landscaping plan. We don't need to see it right now.
Right.
But we need to see a complete landscaping plan that we will need to approve. And that will need to be approved prior to the completion of the multimodal station.
I'd be, I'd be okay with that, with the completion of the multimodal station. That sounds good to me. Collette, can you, can, because I know you have it written up, I'm sorry, in the supplemental information, but can you just review the responsibilities around landscaping for south of Arroyo? I know you had it written up in the, in your report, I just don't know the page.
Meaning who would be responsible for doing it? Is that, is that your question?
For doing it and maintaining it, the whole bit?
The responsibility, let me find the specific wording.
Right.
I want to make sure it's-
Thank you.
In terms of the responsibility for doing it, that the condition reads that the city could also apply for grants to assist with the cost of doing that. And we fully intend to do that as we're doing grant applications and getting grants for some other work in that vicinity. So that's partially, it's, it's almost a partnership to get the work done.
Okay.
And that's the way I believe the, the condition is written in part.
But I think what she was asking was who is going to take on responsibility for the maintenance of that area long-term?
I was asking both, actually.
Sam Trans.
The draft condition is on page 16 of, it's Exhibit B to Attachment 2. And it says that the developer will fund $400,000 and that the city will do the landscaping, irrigation, and sidewalk improvements. And that there will be a maintenance agreement completed and signed by Sam Trans.
Where is that again?
It's on page 16 of Exhibit B to Attachment 2. So the developer would fund, and again, that doesn't mean that-
I have it. Thank you.
That we wouldn't also look for other monies. The city would do the installation and there would be a landscape maintenance agreement that Sam Trans would enter into for this area.
Thank you, Collette. That's exactly what I was looking at.
So the second concern that I have is sort of that area in relation to the multimodal station.
Okay.
And this is sort of getting off of landscaping a little bit in the sense that I'm not sure how much landscaping, whether there's an opportunity there to create some long-term parking. And one of the issues that the residents to the east side have right now is the fact that there's a lot of long-term parking that occurs for Caltrain in the neighborhood. And one of the goals of, let me see if I can find it here. Okay, I got it here.
So you, you were thinking that there is an opportunity to put some long-term parking south of Arroyo?
Yes.
And I believe that was suggested also at some point.
Yes.
Earlier in our discussions. Would you like?
It was Section 48885.
Would you like Brian to come up and speak, speak to that?
Yeah. So essentially adequate parking for existing and future Caltrain and Sam Trans needs shall be maintained. So when I look at it, I think, you know, once electrification and potentially high-speed rail came in, there will be a need for long-term parking. There's, there, you know, there's no sense in having the ability to get to high-speed rail and then having no place to leave your car.
Brian, is that something you can speak to? Thank you.
Good evening, Brian Fitzpatrick, Manager of Real Estate and Property Development for Seminole County Transit District. And I hope that I answer your question correctly, Commissioner Marsters. So two things. One, there are 226 parking spots in the current Caltrain lot. The average use is less than 100 in the, in the high eighties. So we feel that we have sufficient parking. Secondly, in the long run, I hear what you're saying about there could be a significantly different pattern created when electrification and, and potentially high-speed rail come onboard. And nothing that we're doing in this project would preclude the opportunity to create even more parking on the site of the transit village or create more parking south of that area. So nothing we're doing now would, would limit our ability in the future to have the same potential options on the table that we have today, which could either be decking it or, you know, building more parking down south. I don't think anything we're doing stops us from those potential solutions.
Thank you. Do you have any, any questions for Brian on that?
The only question there is the potential of decking, which would put the parking up above the height of the berm.
Yeah, and again, I'm, there's no plans or anything in the works to do that. All I'm saying is that the whole potential spate of opportunities out there will not be any different by doing this project. When it comes time to explore opportunities to increase parking, doing this project isn't going to impact the, the potential things on our palate that we would look to do. Not making it any, we're not making it a worse situation for future growth. We could use the landscape area if need be. There could be solutions on-site. All those things that we look at would, would still be in play.
Except that as part of this project, you're supposed to plan for adequate parking. And so essentially, you're not necessarily planning for it or putting it in place if you're just leaving it as landscaping.
So when we're looking at doing the project today, we have a 226-spot parking facility right now. We're building 226 spots. We use less than 100. So we feel that our short and medium-term needs are more than met. At the request of staff, planning commission, and city council, we're also looking at maximizing, putting in maybe more spots in the existing lot, not because we need them, but to address the concerns that you had set forward. And we had talked a little bit about that last time. So, you know, short and medium-term, we're more than meeting our needs. We've got double the parking that we need on an average daily basis. Long-term, if and when things change here and at every other station up and down our right-of-way, we have the same options as we have at any other station to, to address that when the need is there.
Okay.
I think, thank you.
We'll, we'll talk more about this under parking.
Well, then in that case, Scott, are there any conditions other than we already have the landscaping upon completion of the multimodal station for south of Arroyo? Or is there any other conditions that, that we could actually put in at this point for south of Arroyo? And if not, then I think, I think we need to, to move on.
Yeah, I think that, that as long as we put in that condition about the fact that that is landscaped and is maintained and, and is completed by-
By the multimodal station.
By the time the multimodal station is in place.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any concerns about south of Arroyo? Nope?
No.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Then if you got, I see a natural next thing to talk about being shuttles, yeah, baby. So, since we're all transit and multimodal station at all, the next item to talk about is shuttles. And I know that we did discuss shuttles at length at the last meeting. And though we did not, we certainly did not come to a consensus on the dais as to what we would like to see happen. And I guess I'm just going to start out and then let you guys jump in from there. Certainly, I understand from the notifications from Sam Trans and from Hexagon that moving shuttles to the west side will increase shuttle time. It'll reduce some parking spaces. It may have some implications for grants and funding. And certainly may increase some environmental or greenhouse impacts because of the time that the shuttles may have to travel. I guess I don't take those, those impacts lightly, but for me, I feel the advantage in moving the shuttles to the west side outweighs those potential impacts. And I'd like to make it a condition of approval to move the shuttles to the west side. That is, that is where I stand, however, I'd like to hear your guys' opinions on that.
I had it as a condition as well, moving it to the west side.
Great.
The other thing that I also want to make sure is, and I don't remember seeing it, is that the taxis are also moved to the-
Is that not already a part of the east side connect?
I sort of thought, not, yeah, but it's not a condition of the project. And so that, that doesn't necessarily preclude them from moving shuttles back to the east side at, at some later date. So I would like to see both shuttles-
You mean taxis.
And taxis moved to the west side into the multimodal station.
Okay.
I, I mean, it seems like I'm probably going to get outvoted already, but before we, we do that, I just, I really just don't feel like we have the information that we need in order to make a decision of this magnitude. I mean, I've read the materials that we have from Hexagon. Everything I've read suggests that it's kind of a bad idea. And the reason that I believe we're doing it is because we've got some anecdotal complaints regarding the shuttles going through the east side neighborhoods. I just, I mean, I just, I don't, it just, it feels, it just-
For you, you don't have the evidence enough.
I just don't feel like this is, you know, I recognize that we might be able to do this and I assume that Mr. Rubens would tell us if we couldn't, but it just, it just doesn't really feel like our thing. You know, it's like, isn't there an entire commission that studies traffic? You know, shouldn't they chime in on this before we, you know, go move these shuttles? It just, it just feels very, it feels very responsive. You know, we had these anecdotal complaints about it, but it just doesn't feel like we've developed a record other than there's some anecdotal complaints about it going, I mean, it just, it, it feels like a really significant, complicated decision. And, you know, other than a couple of memos, I mean, I would have liked to hear from, you know, some experts to actually testify on the subject. I just don't, I feel like we could potentially be making a big mistake based on the record that we have. So, I mean, I would, I'll be outvoted if perhaps, but I just, I would recommend caution. I just don't think we have what we need in order to make that decision.
Thank you, David.
I personally, I know that the report says that increasing the time, I think it was seven minutes, would not cause people to not use a shuttle. I'm not, I'm not convinced of that. And I do think that seven minutes actually is a long time to have to wait additionally. So I would not support it this time until hearing more about, about what the impact is moving it to the west side.
Okay. All right, well, then where, where are we with that? I feel like-
I would say your anecdotal question about individuals, I have dealt with this for 13 years and working with Sam Trans in trying to find a solution. And we have looked at putting up signs on the streets that say no vehicles over two tons or a one-ton limit, two-ton limit, I think. Those shuttles still go down the streets. There have been multiple residents who have complained for years and years about the shuttles racing up and down the streets, the residential streets. So I would say actually it's the exact opposite. We have tried for 13 years to look for other solutions that would solve this. At a late date, people are talking about, well, you know, let's put speed bumps in the city. We talked about speed bumps for the city. They told us they were going to charge us $10,000 apiece to put a speed bump in and that the neighborhood would have to pay for it. So I would say that we have tried. The neighborhood has gone to the city. The neighborhood has gone to the city over and over again for years, asking for a solution here.
I can get one last point. And, you know, I don't want to, I get troubled by the use of "we" up here. And, you know, you're talking about a lot of history that apparently you have that has occurred that isn't here, you know, that we don't benefit from. And human memory and ideas are inherently flexible. People remember things, experience things differently, and I'm not doubting, you know, your perception of events, but it didn't play out here. And to kind of echo, and this is not what you said, but there are a whole bunch of people who ride these shuttles, right? Do you think they knew that today, we would be deciding where their shuttles are going to go? I mean, I just, it just doesn't feel like a very public, a very transparent process. It feels like, and again, I'm not, I'm not downplaying the significance of your concerns, and I'm willing to assume for the purposes of argument that they're shared by the east side, but, you know, we're not here to vindicate through this project like all of the concerns that the east side has. And I'm just very concerned, like, we're making a decision that affects more than just the east side. And I just don't feel like we have the record for it. And with that, I'll submit.
Yeah, and I think, David, I think you make excellent points about whether we have the evidence to do it. In proposing this, my point, I guess, is that we have a brand-new multimodal station being built, and it seems like a perfect...
Fit.
Fit. That, yes, there are some challenges and may indeed be some challenges with ridership. And of course, we are so, we also are just making a recommendation to the council, let's be honest. But I think this is a perfect fit, given that there is a brand-new multimodal station. It makes sense despite the challenges, and that's why I proposed it.
And the idea that people will not ride the shuttle for an extra 15 minutes. My typical commute, the 11 miles to Ginentec up in south San Francisco, is two hours and 40 minutes. And it has just been increased, well, it was two hours and 25 minutes. It's now two hours and 40 minutes. It was increased 15 minutes. So to say that people won't take shuttles because there's a slight increase in time, and in some cases it's as much as 15 minutes or longer, it just doesn't pan out.
We don't know because we haven't asked them and we haven't given them an opportunity to come in here and let us know what they think about it.
Well, I mean, the conversation about the shuttles have been in the public record as long as everything else involved with this project. But I will say, you're right, we don't know. There could be, we're taking a risk. There could, I mean, by proposing this, we are going against, you know, we're taking a risk that it could affect ridership. It could affect people that haven't really been able to hear us speak on this. It could, it could have an adverse effect. I think, I think the balance tilts in favor of moving it, but it's a tough decision.
And I think the other, the other issue with this is that the area for the shuttles and the taxis and the kiss-and-drop is actually moved south, okay? And we've seen Hexagon's plan, which was to actually use a route that's not even capable of being accessed by the shuttles without going on Holly Street, which is going to lengthen the time of the shuttles anyway. But the big problem here is that residents that actually want to drop somebody off or pick somebody up are double-parked out on Old County Road, or the shuttles are double-parked on Old County Road. And so this isn't a question of, you know, a little bit of time. This is a question of the safety of the residents of this town and the safety of the individuals who actually use Caltrain and SAM Trans. And so when you think of it just as, you know, are we increasing a little bit of time or are we saying that, you know, the east side residents are complaining because they don't want the shuttles, you know, it's not just that.
Okay, it's just, again, I mean, you have all of this history. You have all of this experience that you bring to the commission, which is laudable, but we just didn't hear it.
And we should have heard all of this from SAM Trans.
Madam Chair, if SAM Trans is here and prepared to talk about shuttles, if you need additional anecdotal information, they are the people who run the shuttle service.
Would that be a benefit? Would you guys like to hear more from SAM Trans?
I don't need to hear. I asked questions last meeting about this, so...
Yeah, I don't need to hear anything. I've talked to them for years.
David, would you like to hear?
Well, I mean, if you, it's you folks. I mean, it's hard for me to conceive of a situation where I would feel comfortable in this context, making a decision about shuttles. So, you know, I just don't see, if it would help you folks make your decision, I highly, I'm very supportive of you hearing from them. But, yeah, I just, it's not that I don't, it's not that I don't think that in some circumstances I would be willing to decide that shuttles should be at the multimodal station rather than coming from the east side. Sure, I just don't feel like that's been the focus of our, I'm not saying we haven't talked about it, I recognize that. I just don't think it's really been the focus. Our focus has been the Transit Village and this building and the effects that it has. And this shuttle thing kind of seems like a sideshow to me. Not unimportant, but it doesn't seem like it's been a primary focus. And I just don't feel like we have enough information to really understand the consequences of our actions today. And I just wish there was a way, I mean, like this idea, I've been, you know, to quote Scott, we've been trying for years. With whom? With SAM Trans? I mean, if the city really wanted, if the city really wanted, and we're the city, right? I mean, we're the planning commission. If the city really wanted to not have the shuttles there, I'm sure the city could have negotiated something with SAM Trans. I mean, if the issue is the double parking, the city has the sheriff's office that can go out there and write people tickets, you know, if that's a priority. But, you know, it just, anyway, I feel like I'm being a broken record. I appreciate you guys, you know, I'm not saying that you're being unreasonable. I just don't, I just don't have enough information.
Right, I understand that. I don't, I actually do have one question, Brian, if you wouldn't mind, on the shuttles. One of the things that occurred to me when I, when I read the information at length, and certainly when we talked about it at the last meeting, was were the routes that were being taken in the potential study of the shuttles? And I understand, Scott, you also had a concern with traffic impacts on Holly, or I could be, I could be completely off on that. I'm wondering if you guys examined taking, taking additional routes, I don't know, maybe down Britton?
That's exactly what I was thinking.
You know, if there are suggestions specifically from the planning commission about what routes might be appropriate and which ways you'd want us to go, SAM Trans would be committed to do that. I think it also bears noting, if I could provide a little bit of context to this, is as noted in the report, there's four shuttles that are either funded or run by SAM Trans or JPB. There's also at least one other and probably two or three other private shuttles. So while we're committed to working with you and working on rooting and effective ways of doing this, there are other shuttles out there that will follow the rules of the road.
Right.
And they're not required to do anything but follow the rules of the road. We would probably go above and beyond that. If you said you don't want us doing it, we wouldn't do it. These other shuttles are going to follow the rules of the road. So if I may, when you guys are on the dais, thinking about really, what are you doing and what's the tie to this project and what are the other things you need to do, I would simply suggest that the city needs to come up with something that's, it's not a, it's not the function of building something. You could give us direction that says, "We would like to see the transit center built in a way that could accommodate up to three extra shuttles if we so determined." But at the same time, I think along the lines of what's been going on here, my recommendation is there needs to be something enforceable for these other shuttles that aren't SAM Trans shuttles. There's just going to be more and more of them. So when it comes down to it, you're talking about enforcing the double parking, those other things. That may help you with what works in this project. You know, you could say, "We want you to have the ability to turn it this way in the future if we'd like to have it that way." You can then defer thinking about this and think about the other things that the city might need to do to create an enforceable solution to stop the double parking and to potentially preclude shuttles from going down the wrong streets. Because it's not just a unilateral thing. We'll work with you, but you gotta stop these other people from doing stuff.
I think that's a fair point, that there's an enforcement issue regardless, because there are additional shuttles who will take whatever route they feel they want to take. And of course, the four shuttles that you've described in the report. Thank you.
And I would observe that I have absolutely no problem with a condition that designs the multimodal station in a manner that would allow for a decision to move the shuttles from the east to the west. I would be absolutely in support of that.
And Scott, you were about to say something as well?
The way I would write the condition is that all taxis and shuttles that serve the rail corridor will be located in the multimodal transit center, and San Carlos city ordinances will be changed to reflect this. That way, you actually have an enforceable ordinance that will allow you to move all of those shuttles and taxis into the multimodal station.
You mean recommend to the city council that they adopt ordinance, since we have no...
Yes, yes. We're always in the stage of recommending.
Can you repeat, repeat your recommendation?
I would say, "All taxis and shuttles that serve the rail corridor will be located in the multimodal transit center, and San Carlos city ordinances will be changed to reflect this."
And Jesse, where are you landing with this?
I'm still in the same position that I was in the beginning. Yeah, I agree. I think all shuttles.
So with Scott's perspective?
Yeah.
Okay. And Shannon, has this discussion altered your...
I'd support having it so that the shuttles can be on either side. So with a language that would allow for it to be built to support both, but not require...
So allow for the design similar to what David was suggesting? Okay. Oh, and I guess this needs...
As we're telling you, the only vote that counts.
Awesome! No, I'm just kidding. That's why I keep pushing it to you guys. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to side with Jesse and Scott on this. I think all, I think all taxis and shuttle, shuttles that require, that serve the rail corridor will be moved to the west side. And that would be the recommendation we make to council at this point. That's what I would like as a condition.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I just want to point out that the ordinance that you're considering recommending to the council is not codified in the same way that the rest of the municipal code is as far as parking enforcement and red zones and, you know, those types of things. Those normally go to the Transportation and Circulation Commission. I mean, I'm okay with you recommending that the council adopts such an ordinance. It's just, it can't be really in this ordinance that you're approving tonight. It has to be in a separate ordinance.
I understand, and I think that goes to David's point as well, that there's an entirely different commission that studies this. So how would we best move forward then on this issue?
Well, I think you have it either, you could put it in what we've coined the bucket list, or you could have it as a recommendation that the city council consider amending the municipal code to include changes in the parking, for instance. But you definitely could do what Commissioner Silverman is suggesting, is that the intermodal station and parking design include accommodating a certain number of shuttles, for instance.
So could we do both then? Could we...
You could do that, yeah, you could do both. It's just, I just wanted to be clear that the, that the ordinance that you're considering recommending on tonight is not the ordinance that would ultimately need to be approved to change the parking and other issues that are there. But it doesn't mean you can't recommend that the council consider that.
Okay. Well, given, given that important clarification, then I would say that it sounds like we want to recommend, or at least the majority, the ever-so-slight majority of us want to recommend both, that we do include the language that allow for the design of the multimodal station to include additional shuttles. And I forget specifically how you phrased it, and forgive me if I butchered that.
No, it was just basically designed to accommodate moving all of the shuttles. And if you want to include the taxis too, that's fine. It would be a condition that the multimodal station be designed in such a way to accommodate moving all of the shuttles and taxis over to the west side in the event that the city decides to do that.
Okay. So I say we add David's language, and then we separately also recommend that the council...
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
I would, I would also be fine with that. Okay, thank you very much, Greg, for that clarification. And that takes care of shuttles as far as, as far as I understand.
Can you hear anything else with shuttles at this point?
I hope not. So what I'd like to do then is to wrap up parking and TDM and traffic.
Are those the only things left?
Those are the only main things I had, other than other commissioner topics. Yes, I also have other commissioner topics.
Yeah.
But, yeah, those are the, those are the main things I had. I have them separated out.
Oh, awesome. That's great.
So, all right, let me flip back.
Can we do TDM next while I'm still mostly conscious?
Functioning?
Yeah.
Let's do it. All right, TDM, David.
Okay, so we had, we had, oh, I, so I won't speak for anyone else. I had asked the developer to get back to me regarding a couple of things involving the TDM, and they did. And the first was with respect to the transit passes. And I want to make sure I understand the response, so if you could come on up, I would appreciate it.
And we're all looking at the same memo?
Yeah, there's a memo dated October 7th. It says, "Attention, Colette Munier, consulting project planner." Did I pronounce that right? How do you pronounce your last name?
Munier, yay for the moon.
Munier, got it, thank you.
Darn it, well, I butchered it. And so you're proposing originally, and I want to first say thank you, because you increased from the original proposal that you're now proposing, that the transit subsidy will be offered to all residents, and then after the initial lease-up, it'll be provided to 50. Can you explain what that means?
Sure. It's obvious, you know, during the initial lease-up, anyone who moves in will be given the opportunity to participate in the, in the program.
Yes.
And it is a program where we subsidize. It's not 100% payment subsidy, so it's incentivizing them to build new habits.
Yes.
You know, a significant number of people that are going to move in already will have those habits, and it'll just be a big bonus for them to get started. Once we complete the initial lease-up, a property like this would probably have about 100 units a year turnover, with a normal turnover, somewhere between, you know, 90 and 100, you know, units will move in and move out. So during that period of time, if we're offering, is that what it was, 50, then that means that 50 of those 100 would be opting to do this. It's a finite number, but I don't think there's any realistic chance. Now, the world may be different, you know, a long time from now, but I can't, I don't think of any realistic chance that we would really see that 50% of the people would be primarily using that mode of transportation to get to work. If they did, this would be far beyond any expectations, and frankly, we shouldn't be paying as many traffic impact fees or doing any of these things, because we'll have very little traffic impact if half the people are using the train to transit.
I'm now going to ask you a lot of hypotheticals. All right, you ready? It's late.
No.
Okay, so 280 units, let's assume, 280 units, more than one person... So 280 units, let's assume, 280 units, more than one person in most of the units. So say in 280 units, and there's no relationship between this and reality, but between, in 280 units, you have 700 residents. All 700 of those people in the initial lease-up want a subsidized transit pass. They can get it. Okay? Thank you. What is the subsidy?
I believe according to the program, it's $20. So we will contribute $20 toward, each month, toward their transit pass, whatever that is, monthly.
Okay.
So I don't know what a monthly pass is. It's $60, so we're probably, you know, we're incentivizing them to use it, but we're not paying all of it. And that is the standard, that is the program established by the, whatever, the entity that creates the, you know, these gauges.
Okay. Now, when you say the initial lease-up, do you mean, I mean, you're going to be building these buildings on a staggered basis?
The first person that moves into each unit.
Each unit?
Yeah.
Okay. And so here, you, let's say...
For a period of a year. So the idea is, we're going to help incentivize them to create these habits. After the year, then, you know, then they'll either have built the right habits or, you know, they won't. But we're not intending to subsidize them forever. We're creating incentives for them to get with the program, and again, that's what we're doing each year thereafter. As new people move into the property, we'll be offering it up to 100. I don't think that we'll be, like I said, I don't think we'll have that level of people that will accept, but if they do, we will.
I'm sorry, you said up to 100? What do you mean, up to 100?
100 passes. So, I'm sorry, 100, each year, so if you do the initial lease-up, once we've completed that, then year three or whatever it is, we would expect 100 units of people to move out?
Yes.
And 100 to move in. We would offer for, call it, the first 50 people who accepted or requested such passes, so it'd be part of the move-in, we would proactively be encouraging them to do that. We would describe the program to them as one of their potential move-in benefits. And if they chose to do it, they could sign on. And again, that would be on a first-come, first-served basis, and we'd be committed to funding 50 such passes on an ongoing basis rather than the initial 38. Which means that each year, and again, when you talk about how many people may live there, while the total population may be whatever it is, you know, it's only likely going to be the primary employee-type person that's likely to be a commuter, you know, if it's, if there's a child or, you know, potentially a spouse or somebody who works locally and walks, you have a whole group of people.
And it's 50 new passes every year?
Yes.
And with no sunset date?
No, it'd be...
No, I understand that they only get it for a year, but 50 new people, 50 new...
We would, on an ongoing basis, each year be committed to up to 50 passes. So year, you know, 2019 would be 50, and then we roll into 2020, it would be 50 for that year.
Now, you mentioned $20 as being, and, you know, I'm being a little unfair. I'm going to say that in advance. You indicated that might be a third of a pass. Now, you would recognize that the amount of a pass varies quite a bit based on the distance that someone travels. Would you be willing to actually have it be, the subsidy be a third of a pass?
No, we'd like, we would, our desire, with the program that's out there, again, the program that we're complying to, the TDM program and the TDM criterion, provide a menu. We've done that menu. To meet our objectives requires 38.
Yeah.
And we've done a lot more in the initial term, but we're increasing that from 38 to 50. So that means that we're reducing our trip count by another 12 per year and getting well below the standard that it's targeted to get to. And that being, we're stretching on that side, and I'm not prepared to stretch beyond what the criterion to qualify that for that credit would be. I think it's appropriate, and we've stretched on the number count rather than on the, you know, on changing the dollar amount. I still think that it makes sense that people are making their own decisions. And we also, again, we're trying to create, to incentivize long-term habits, not short-term ones. The more we incentivize, you know, the more we make them free, the more likely people are to take them and maybe even put them in their software, just in case they go to a ballgame once, you know, once a so often, and not necessarily build the habits. So I think we've done, we're being very proactive.
And I don't disagree with that. It's just, you know, we're, 50 passes a year, it's 1,000 bucks, right?
A month.
A month? Okay. So it's 12,000.
And so each person's getting $240 a year of incentives.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Those are the questions I have about that subject.
I actually appreciate that you've raised the number significantly, and I recognize that. But the idea of the TDM is to lower the amount of trips by 20%. And so if the number of trips are not actually lowered by 20%, there will be additional...
Absolutely.
...remedies to find a way to lower that to 20%.
Absolutely. So the city is protected from that standpoint in the condition that it requires us to, you know, look at that again, and I don't know what the frequency is, but we'll be looking at it again. So hopefully, with these extra measures that we're taking on, we'll have kind of overshot and have exceeded it. But if we don't, if it doesn't work, then we'll be fixing it.
Then we'll be fixing it.
I see.
Okay.
Any other questions on TDM?
EVAs?
Um, not on that, although I...
Emergency, I mean, our electric vehicle charging stations.
I was going to ask about electrical vehicle charging stations, and I was also going to ask about bicycle storage, but...
Yeah, let's just do TDM.
Okay. So again, you increase the number of bike storage from 1 to 5 to 1 to 3, right?
Yes, and I'll tell you that, you know, we do, we do many of these projects in infill locations. We're, you know, building some close in Seattle right now, which is a very bike-friendly place. Nowhere have we provided 1 to 3. Nowhere have we had anywhere near that number of people use those spaces. The reality we found is, there are so many people with such high-end bikes that they, you know, they're, like their extra child, I mean, they take them into their unit, frankly.
Well, I mean, I guess I just, I find it so hard to believe that, you know, there isn't going to be a bike per unit. I mean, I just, I just find it really hard to believe, but you're...
No, there may be, but people will not choose to use those spaces, use spaces like that. They will, a big number of people will want, you know, they really cherish those things, and they may have several thousand dollars invested, and, you know, they're going to, they're going to take them into their unit. These are very large units, there's a lot of storage capacity in the units, and I think that we'll find that. Now, I think as you can see from the letter, there's also longer-term solutions if the world changes and there's really that level of demand. Again, we will respond to that resident demand. And there are solutions that we could increase that in the future if the demand is there significantly, but it won't be. I mean, we've done this forever, this whole thing, you know, of having the bike storage, we've been adopting it more and more, very little of it gets used. I may be happy to have you out there when we open up and when we're leased up and we're full and...
I may go park my five bikes in your building if you have that much space.
If you can afford it.
And then, does anyone else? I mean, I appreciate, you responded, you increased it. I appreciate that. I would have liked to see more.
And again, if people really use that many, then hopefully, they're so bike savvy that the traffic generated is going to be so far less than anybody thought that, you know, they will never see cars moving in and out of here.
And then as far as the electric car charging stations?
Yeah, so I actually...
Not even one per building?
I personally, you know, worked on this one. So a lot of this other stuff, other folks in this team. So I've had conversation with all of our other partners, and I've had a conversation with our partners in the east coast that do management for us. So, for example, the largest manager of apartments in the Maryland-Washington DC area, Bezuto Management Company, they happen to manage for us. And one of the companies that specializes in this has them embolden, you know, their logo on their program about, you know, electric vehicle charging. So I got in touch with them. And with all these great infill locations, they have a grand total of, in a portfolio of about 25,000 apartment units, they have four electric vehicle parking stations.
This is Northern California. It's not Maryland.
And very little utilization. Now here, I'm starting there, rotating to here. First, I'm going to go to Pacific Northwest. We are leasing up two properties, again, infill locations, a lot of the same demographics that you would expect here. We've put in two stations in each one. We are, say, 70% leased out of the first 360 units. We have a grand total of one person who is on the program, who's charging their car. I don't doubt that that might change, and hopefully, it will change over time. But that's the type of utilization. Here, there's a new property that's just completed leasing up 300 units in Foster City. They put in two EVAs. They have, you know, whatever, however many cars they have, you know, 350, 400 cars, they have one person using the two electric vehicle charging stations. Further, in discussing with the operations people at these properties and the folks who specialize in it, something to understand, these EVAs are not designed for one car. It's not like a residence where you have one, you pull up and you park. These are higher-speed stations. They're designed to handle, number one, you put a station in, and you can charge the space that's in front of, the space next to it on this side, and the space next to it on that side. Plus, cars can rotate in and out. So the idea is, an electronic vehicle charging station is designed to handle quite a number of cars. So having three of them is going to give us the ability to charge a dozen or 15 or something like that. The other thing I want you to understand is, we would be proactive, because the problem right now is, where the electric vehicles are, they're in the high-end, single-family homes, because it's not attainable yet. It's very expensive. Eventually, it will become, you know, somewhat more affordable, and hopefully, we'll migrate down into this universe. As it does, it's going to be the most affluent that are going to have it. We're going to be wanting to target those folks. And in our garages, because they are open garages that happens to be adjacent to where the transformers are, all the conduit that runs to the individual units runs in those areas, very easy for us to adapt over time, and we will. But it would be foolish of us to create, enforce, and legislate technology that by the time it gets mainstream, will be totally different, and these machines would be obsolete or a waste of money. The other thing that happens is, when you establish these, is they use up available parking spaces. So why have a whole lot more of parking spaces dedicated to that use when they're not being used currently? Eventually, when we have many more such cars, then it'll be appropriate. They'll satisfy some of the parking demand.
It would seem that, I hear everything you're saying, Jeff. I guess, I guess my, you're right, it just doesn't seem to jive with what I think is current and is coming, particularly, at least one per residential building seems more appropriate, but I'm not...
Well, how about, what if we had a condition that said that when all of your, whenever, when all of your, when all of your apartments are leased out, that you do a, you know, I don't know whether it'd be a survey, or if you're at 80% utilization for your three, and I'm throwing this out of the air, I don't know what the number should be, but you do some sort of analysis, and if those three spots are being used to a point that it indicates that there's more need, then you'll increase the number of stations?
You don't need to legislate that. If we don't have enough, if we, here's the thing, how's this going to help, how's this going to help parking? I mean, not parking, how's this going to, how's this going to benefit traffic? A car is a car, whether it's electric or gas. You're not going to reduce the amount of people using transit or the amount of people on the road. There is no, I mean, I'll say, there's no way that you can say by putting an electric versus a gas station is going to reduce traffic.
It's going to help the environment.
It might.
Well, so let me ask you this...
So that's number one. Number two is, be assured that we will, we will be on the cutting edge of this. And so if the demand is there, we will supply for that demand. I mean, we will do that because it's in our best interest. No different than when we have an exercise facility. If we put in two, you know, elliptical trainers, and that's good for the environment and people's health too, and we find out that people want more of them, we'll do that. But you could say, "Hey, we want you to put six elliptical trainers in there." We might find that people want exercise bikes instead.
So I'm going to give you two options, and this is what I'm going to propose. It's not what the, what the commission is going to want necessarily, but if you had a choice, and these are your two bad choices, but you're picking which one you like more, a charging station in every building or a condition that requires that you add more charging stations based on a demand study? Which one do you like more?
Demands? How about, why wouldn't we do this? We'll put the three in, and if there's, if there is more demand, if we have people requesting, we'll put them in every building. But again, we're talking about using up parking spaces that we need.
Didn't we have the discussion last time, and you agreed to put in the infrastructure for...
The infrastructure's effectively there. I mean, we have conduit, we have conduit there, but why don't you want to buy 5,000 and 10,000 of our charging stations and stick them up and use up parking spaces?
I'm just saying, if the infrastructure is there, then it's very easy for you to put the rest of the system in based on the demand.
Maybe that's a good solution. Let's, we'll put the infrastructure that there can be an electrical vehicle parking station in each building. We will put the parking stations in. We're telling you, we're going to put the three in. We'll put, you know, we'll have it plumbed and conduit to the location where we just add the machine that's appropriate to that locate, into each building, but we'll...
Well, they already said that they were going to have the capacity to put in like 28. That's, but that's not, I, I don't personally believe that the market, I'm a big believer in market forces, all right? But market forces aren't enough to get new technology into places all the time, because it's expensive. I don't, you know, it's fine. I'm going to make a proposal, the committee can, the commission can either go with it or not.
I just don't want to put the, again, I think three is enough. We'll put, we'll put the wire, I would say, we will put the wiring in so that we can have one in each location, and then if there's the demand, we'll put them in. I mean, but we just, I just don't want to buy 5 and 10,000 dollar things that we find that they're obsolete in 18 months.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I appreciate that. So what I am going to propose as a condition is that they put in the three, and that at full occupancy, they evaluate whether the capacity of the three is exceeded, and if so, add, require that they add additional charging stations. That would be, that would be my proposal.
I'd be in favor of that. Commission?
I'd really like to see the market drive this. I'd like to see them build it out, do everything except for buy the machines. I don't want them to have to spend money on machines if the need isn't there. So I actually am in agreement with what you're saying. They can evaluate at full occupancy or 80% occupancy.
Okay. At this point, commissioners, we are past 10:30, and I'm going to need a motion to extend the meeting.
I'm prepared to move to extend the meeting if the, if the commission believes that there's a reasonable likelihood that we can finish today. I feel like, I feel like we can.
No.
I feel like we should. I'm willing to stay here till 1:00 in the morning if that's what it takes.
I think even if we do, I would like to see the wording for a lot of the conditions that we've talked about tonight before we make a final vote.
Which is why staff, I believe, can put the wording up on the screen. Because I agree with you, I think, I think that's typical, that we want to see the exact wording before we, before we, before we vote. I also am willing to go and see where we can get and keep going. But it's entirely up to you guys.
I'm willing to go for it. You might have to nudge me to wake up, but yeah.
And eventually, we may have to decide what we say and what we don't say.
I'm willing to go. I still have a lot of things to talk about, though.
Okay, well then, I'm going to need a motion.
I move to extend for a reasonable period of time.
Why don't we just do like an hour at a time, probably?
Fine, I move to extend for an hour.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? I, okay, thank you, everybody. We will reevaluate at 11:30. All right.
We've asked staff, might as well, I assume.
We live to serve.
I've seen the city council meetings, I know you guys are up for it. Okay, so that is some TDM discussion. I don't know that we've gotten to everybody's concerns about, about TDM, so I want to make sure that we're there. And we may have additional concerns on traffic. And we may have additional concerns on traffic unrelated to TDM, and I'd want to talk about that also at this point.
I had other concerns about parking that were discussed at the last meeting. I don't know if it's the right time to do it. Do you want me to bring it up? Which is the coupling or decoupling of parking. I wanted to...
Bundling.
Bundling, excuse me.
Bundling and unbundling. I did have traffic...I had parking separate, but I don't mind doing it all together.
Well, I mean, anything that folks think is TDM, are we done with that?
Right.
Yeah.
I feel comfortable moving.
If through the chair...
Yes.
If you are finished with TDM, can I just make sure that staff has understood what there seems to be a consensus for?
Sure.
And I understood that you're accepting the proposal that they increase from 38 to 50 in terms of the number of transit passes as proposed by the developer.
We didn't discuss that, but I am reluctantly in agreement, yeah.
I'm also in agreement.
And that the...that you basically want a condition that says that they will install three charging stations, and then at full occupancy, reevaluate...
80% off?
The demand for charging stations and provide additional ones as appropriate. Have I captured?
Full occupancy or 80%?
The 80% came from a kooky hypothetical that I came...basically, I was trying to...and this is beyond my ken. I mean, I don't know at what point the charging stations are overused, and so I had thrown out 80% as a...just as a discussion point. What I think is, the language that has been suggested is fine, as long as it's mandatory, that they both at full occupancy. Now, it doesn't have to be full occupancy, but I think full occupancy makes the most sense, that when they're...when they've leased out their buildings, that they evaluate the amount of capacity, and if the capacity is exceeded, that they be required to install additional charging stations in order to meet the capacity that they deem exists.
And so your determination of capacity was if the charging stations are in use 80% of the time?
I don't think that I have the expertise necessary to make that. I think that it just needs to be if, you know, I guess, I don't know if we can...I'm sure Mr. Rubens can come up with something, and I would trust him. Something along the lines of, you know, what is considered, you know, full use is exceeded, they would be required to install additional stations that would be sufficient to meet existing use.
Okay, so if that...it would be they'll install three stations initially and reevaluate no later than at full occupancy...
Sure.
And provide additional charging stations when all existing ones are fully utilized?
And the infrastructure has to be there for 28?
Yeah, they already actually indicated that they would provide enough infrastructure for 28.
Okay, so what I had understood is that they...it's a concrete wall, and that they can just simply extend conduits mounted to the wall to provide them. So there's not really a need to provide infrastructure for 28. They would simply extend the conduits?
I mean, that's...I mean, what I understood was that they had to put the infrastructure...so there's basically, there's the charging station, which is, I guess, the expensive stuff that they don't want to buy. But then there's also the...whatever infrastructure they need for the capacity, and they were indicating they were going to put that in anyway.
So you're talking about making sure that the electrical panel is sized to provide...to take on those additional circuits?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, they're going to install three, they're going to evaluate them periodically, but no later than at full occupancy, and install additional ones as necessary, and the electrical...the electrical service to each building shall be sized to accommodate...and you said 28?
That's what they said, actually, yeah.
To accommodate 28. So we were simply talking about sizing the electrical service?
That's right.
Okay.
And then, since you're going through them, and maybe we're going to get to this next also, I was going to reluctantly support their agreement to increase the number of bike spaces to 96 from 56.
That was in their letter, I think.
That's in there.
Yeah.
That's right, on number three.
Bless you.
I think that they're saying that they are accommodating 96.
Originally, in the original proposal, as I understood it, they were providing 56, and now they're going to provide 96.
No, I think the condition that...the condition when we said that they would comply with the city ordinances would have been 56 spaces, they're demonstrating that right now, they're showing 96, is my...I understood it.
Well, I mean, I don't know that it matters. They're agreeing to provide 96. I will just observe that what the Sierra Club indicated in their letter was that the developer had originally agreed to provide short-term bicycle parking for 10% of total public spaces and one bike per...one bike space per five residential units, and now...
That was a condition of approval that staff...
Yes.
Drafted, which simply carried what the code required forward. We didn't count the spaces, but simply that they would meet the city ordinances.
Yes, and now they're going to exceed.
They're demonstrating that their proposal exceeds it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so you want this to be written in as one per three instead of one per five?
Yes.
You'd like that wording changed?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And that was for me. I don't know, is everyone else okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Yep.
And I think that's where we were with what we proposed, with TDM. Okay.
So I just want to make sure, so we have bikes at 1 to 3, the condition about the electrical charging stations, and the TDM program would be revised from 38 transit passes to 50?
No, it's 38...and this may have been in the original. Frankly, I don't remember reading that, but basically, one for every unit plus 50 every year.
But I think he was talking about the first...the lease-up for the first year for every resident.
The first lease-up, so up to two...well, I mean, up to as many as it needs to be in the first lease-up, plus in subsequent years, 50 per year.
Okay, we'll work on the wording for that.
All right, okay. Anything else on TDM? I know we talked about that bike path at nauseam earlier, so I don't know that we have much else to say on that. That's the only other thing I had for TDM. Anything else?
Can I ask where the bike parking is, and how much bike parking is there as part of the multimodal station?
Okay, so not the...
The project itself, since we're on bikes.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Brian, would you be able to answer that question for Scott?
Bike parking for the multimodal station?
Yes.
Brian Fitzpatrick, San Trans. We had a meeting the other day with our station access coordinator for Caltrain that I attended to get Caltrain's opinion on where the bikes should be parked. And there is a set of bike lockers right now that are under, sort of right below the southerly stairs, as you go up to the platform, and the southerly stairs, if you look down there, bike facilities down there. The initial thought is that we want to keep them there. Now, we do understand that there may be some things that may happen in the design of the project that could impact that, but the main goal is to keep them generally in that area if that can be accommodated. Those would be bike lockers.
And how many bikes would they accommodate?
We plan on having the same number that we have there now. I don't remember the exact number, but our occupancy in those lockers is less than 80%, so we have sufficient capacity. So we just retain the number of lockers we have now, put them in generally the same spot.
And so there's no increased capacity for all the member...anybody in the development that wants to ride their bike over to the station from north. I mean, we've put all this effort into potential bike paths and bike routes and everything, and three...one space for every three units, and yet, we're now essentially saying that there isn't going to be the capacity in the multimodal station to deal with bikes that come from north of Holly.
I think what we're saying is, right now, we feel we've got sufficient capacity to address that. If it turns out that additional capacity is needed, we'd have the ability to build that in.
I think also, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not an avid bike rider, but most people that use their bikes to get to transit will probably take their bikes with them on the train. Am I correct?
There's a balance. I don't have the statistics at my hand, but there is a balance on some will take it on the train, some will leave them in the bike lockers. Again, if it turns out that there is a increased demand, we have the capacity to add lockers to accommodate that.
As a bike rider, I don't foresee a lot of people going to be jumping on their bikes to ride a quarter mile and leave the bike at the station. If they're going to take their bike to the station from the transit village, they're probably going to be taking it on the train.
And that was my thinking, that it's more for the endpoint of the train to get...I'm thinking particularly San Francisco, to get around whatever the endpoint of the train would be. Okay.
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions, Scott?
One question, there's a...
For Brian?
I don't know if it's for Brian, or...
Every time I get Brian, I jump out of his seat and make a...
But there's a request to waive the requirement for bike parking within 50 feet of the main door of an establishment. Can somebody explain why the bike parking can't be within 50 feet of...
That's a...that's a recommendation from staff, and the front doors face onto the plaza, and that may not be...as we designed the plaza, we may not want the bike pla...the short-term bike parking in the plaza. So this was to give us the flexibility, as we look at that, perhaps to provide that short-term parking to the east of those buildings. That was the intent. Because of the...in the sense, it's kind of unusual that the buildings face sideways to the plaza instead of having their main doors facing towards El Camino Real. And at this point, having not seen the overall design, I didn't want...we felt it wasn't...we didn't want to limit ourselves to having to meet that standard of having it within 50 feet of the front door of those buildings, which would have necessarily placed it into the plaza. But the whole design of the plaza is something that is coming back before the commission as part of design review. So if you want to put it there, you can, but you don't have to.
So we'll get to look at it for design review.
So why don't we waive that when the design comes back, rather than sort of making that decision now?
Because you're...at this point, you're writing the rules, and all the rules apply except the ones that we're changing. So that's why. You'd have to amend the PD to change this zoning requirement. If you hadn't put it in here, you could certainly change, you know, if you want a wordsmith it, saying that...but that's the intention, is to give the developer and to give the city the flexibility to not have that 50-foot radius in front of each of those entrances, extending out into a plaza, be the only place that we could provide the short-term parking, bike parking.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it just sort of seems like we're trying to hide it around the corner.
I'm simply...I mean, you can put it there, you can take it out if you like, but the issue is, is that this is this main pedestrian access to the depot. We've talked about it as being a public space, and, you know, if you want to put it there, you can make that decision as part of design review, but this gives you the flexibility to put it somewhere else.
I agree with staff's rationale behind that. Thank you for the explanation.
I do, too.
Anything else on TDM? Okay, well, if there is anything, let me know. Otherwise, I was thinking we can go ahead and go on to any other traffic and, I guess, parking-related issues. I did notice that the onsite loading spaces was addressed in the memo, so thank you for that.
Can, before you go away from that?
Yes.
The onsite loading was partially addressed? They're asking for a waiver of two sites, and one of them has been put in? So my question is, what happens to that other site? I thought we were going to put in two potential sites for loading and not just one.
And we're talking about, just to refresh everybody, we're talking about the loading site for Building 8, which we talked about at length...
Seven, maybe? I don't know if it was...
Oh, really?
If it was seven and eight, and each one was a loading space.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we see where we were with that.
Madam Chair, you can load Building 8 from the location that was proposed. You could theoretically also load Building 7, but you could also have a loading area potentially in the driveway between Buildings 6 and 7. So that was the other one that is an option. I mean, if you...typically, what we'll see is loading occurring before business hours, and so that's kind of how you do it. You could have...you could allow them to use that driveway to do loading and unloading before regular business.
You're speaking between 6 and 7?
Yes.
Correct?
Right.
And I'll just observe that I actually found the explanation the developer gave regarding why they hadn't provided loading spaces to be convincing. One seems like enough to me, so I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it, actually, as well.
I'm, too. Sorry, I'm a little confused.
Maybe we can move past loading.
I'm actually okay with it as well. All right.
I'm just checking, excuse me, through the chair, the proposed draft condition is generally supported by the commission?
The draft condition...no, what everybody was saying is that they're okay with having the one additional parking space, the one additional loading space that was proposed...
Right.
Which is to the east of Building 8?
Right.
Right, which I don't think is in the draft conditions.
It's not in the draft conditions.
Not in the draft conditions. The draft conditions ask for a waiver of two loading sites.
Well, actually, they...no, I'm talking about the supplemental information we provided to...
Oh, thank you.
With draft language.
Thank you. Can you direct me to the...
It's on page...bottom of page 2.
Thank you.
And having read it, I...it's...I'm fine with it.
Bottom of page 2. Oh, thank you, Collet. Yeah, I was fine with the language there when I read it earlier.
I'm fine with the language.
I'm fine.
I mean, I'd observe that there's actually a restriction for no unloading on Old County Road, which is something that Scott had wanted. I mean, I don't feel strongly about it, but...
Does it not include that?
I'd observe that it...no, it's there.
No, it is there.
It's there. I just wanted to note that it's there. I'm not opposed to it. I didn't feel strongly that that needed to be a condition, but I just wanted to note that it's there, and I don't really have a problem with it.
It is...yeah, it is there, and I do like that. That was one of the main issues Commissioner Marster had raised. Okay, anything else on loading? Sweet. All right.
Unloading, not unloading.
Okay, let's get back to other traffic and parking-related issues. And I'm sorry, Shannon, you had started, so I won't get into it.
Yeah, regarding the bundling of rent and parking, I just want to say I'm not in support of unbundling. I think that would cause people to park out in the neighborhood, and I'm not...I don't want to encourage that.
And I raised that, and I was convinced that unbundling parking was not a good idea based on the explanation, so...
Yeah, and I think we had come to consensus on the dais to not move forward with unbundling parking, but thank you for that. Any other traffic and parking? Again, I know we did talk about traffic and turn-ins and turn-outs quite a bit last meeting, but I wanted to see where everybody was at.
Not for traffic, no.
Or parking?
Parking. Parking.
I've got a bunch of things underbilled.
Okay. It's okay.
I had some parking.
Okay. Well, Scott, you know what? Why don't we go with Jesse? You're right. Let's alter it, let's alter it a bit. You're all welcome to my coffee.
Okay.
That one cup of coffee.
We're a commission.
We forgot just for you, that cup of coffee.
So I just wanted to get some clarification, too, because I saw two different areas in regards to the hundred, I think it's, I want to say 100 spots for the city to be able to park. I think it's south of El Camino, southern part of the transit center.
South of Holly, you mean?
No, I think he means just on the south.
South part of the transit center, basically. Because in one area, I think it was page 19 of 35, in the summary, it mentioned, let me go to that real quick here. 100 parking spaces for public parking in the southern portion of the commuter lot on weekday evenings and weekends. But on, I think it was the PD plan, sorry, it's getting late, let me try to figure out.
That's okay.
On page 15, under the multimodal transit center, it makes reference to that same lot, but it only says evenings and weekends, I think. Yeah, parking after hours and on weekends.
The condition is on page 16 of Exhibit B to Attachment Two.
You're going to have to give us some time to find that one.
I'm sorry. So it's in the conditions of approval, the draft conditions, it's on page 16 of those?
I'm on page 16, I think.
Okay, it's just before D, it's number six, top third of the page.
Agreement for free public use of commuter parking lot?
Parking weekday evenings and after, okay, great. Yeah, there was just a little discrepancy there, so I just wanted to make sure that that was the case. Trying to think of what else I had here. Parking-related. Oh, let somebody else jump on there.
Anybody else have parking-related issues?
Yes, so I, there's a couple, a question and a adjustment I'd like to make on the residential parking program. The first question, well, actually, let me put the condition that I would put in, that the plan should be in place before construction begins. So I have a problem with waiting until after the whole thing is over to actually institute a residential parking program, because as soon as that construction starts, there's no place for people to park, and you've got to create that multimodal station first and then move everybody down there. And so before that begins, the residential parking program should be in place.
Provided that the neighborhood, of course, votes to...
Right. I'm not saying that we're going to do it. I'm saying that the idea was that the program was going to be developed and then could be administered based on a vote of 50 plus one of the residents. But that needs to be in place prior to the construction, starting for the multimodal site.
That makes sense, actually.
Rather than waiting until it's done.
Because it will reduce parking spaces, the construction will.
I, if that's what the commission wants, I'm not opposed to it, but I had thought that the idea was that, okay, so if we know that the east side wants it right now, then that's great, but I thought the idea was we were going to see whether changing the parking situation ended up negatively impacting the neighborhood such that they would want it. And so they're not going to know, they're not going to know what effects the project has until it's built.
I think there are parts of the neighborhood that want it right now, and then there are other parts of the neighborhood that would probably be impacted depending upon the construction.
Okay, I just, like, I just wanted to spot the issue that that wasn't what I understood initially, but I don't, I'm not opposed to it being in place.
I think you're right. I wasn't even thinking about the traffic impacts during construction, so that also wasn't what I was thinking initially, but I do, I do agree that they will be impacted during construction, and it makes sense if the neighborhood chooses that it...
And nothing gets done unless 50 plus one...
Forward earlier.
...approve of it on each street.
Is the, is the way that, is it the way that it exists now, the language, would it allow asking on multiple occasions whether the community wants it? What I mean is, like, I would be, since the original rationale, as I understood it, behind the parking program, was to deal with the potentiality of problems caused by the project, I would hate that we ask the community, you know, the day that the shovel goes in the ground, whether they want it. They say no, and then four years later, when the project is built, and they're actually feeling the effects of the, assuming they happen, they're feeling the effects of the project, they've already said no.
I see your point.
And then they can't have it.
My understanding is it's the exact opposite, in the sense that if 50 plus one of the neighborhood requests it at any time, then it will be implemented. Is that, is that how it's written?
Is that accurate?
And I'm not sure.
The way I look at this condition is that it's a funding mechanism, that the developer's going to contribute $10,000 to, it looks like I'm trying to get the right definition here. It's a design and implementation for residential parking permit program. That, once we do that, it seems like the program model would be in place, and the vote could happen at any time after that. That's the way I see the condition.
Okay. All right. I mean, I'm fine.
And if at any time 50 plus one decide they don't want to do the permit parking anymore, they can vote to do the exact opposite.
Good luck with that.
Goodness, yeah. Okay, so I think, I think there's some agreement there.
So, Scott, through the chair, if we could look at the wording on page nine of the conditions of approval, I'm not sure I understand the point that Commissioner Marston is making.
It would just be, I think, the developer shall be blah, blah, blah. You can just add like a sentence somewhere that says the responsibility to fund the program will commence upon construction.
So in the last sentence, it says the design of the program shall be complete and ready for implementation before occupancy of the first residential unit in the mixed-use portion of the project. That the fact that they're building everything north of Holly First, which my belief is that that's their intent is to...
Scott, I mean, it's fine. You don't, I mean, just the design of the program shall be complete and ready for implementation before construction begins. I mean, that's all it needs to have, it just need to change that sentence. I don't think we need to talk anymore about, I mean, I'm...
I'm okay with that.
Is that okay?
That's what I wrote.
So in condition that, we just say instead of before occupancy, it should be before the commencement of construction?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Awesome.
All right. Parking, more.
I had one more thing on that. And that was, so who pays for implementation of this? I understand that they're putting $10,000 towards creating a program, and I understand that you, in the past, have said that the...
The program is self-funding, isn't it?
Program is self-funding through fines.
That's correct.
But I don't know if that's really going to cover the cost of the program if we, by some remote chance, get to the stage where people are not actually parking there. So I have the same concern again about the city taking on an added burden of implementing a program that may actually cost the city money.
The program itself is very inexpensive. It's signage and placards, so that's the cost. And then it's just, the police department then just enforces the hours that are on the signs.
So is there no person who drives through and checks to see whether there are vehicles that do not have permits?
That would be...
Yeah, they're already doing that, that, you know, the meter people are already in the community, and it would just be...
They are good.
Here's a new block, go do it. And then they, you know, and then it kind of generates its own revenue.
Okay.
So again, you know, I've done this before, the actual cost, the hard costs are very low, much less than $10,000. $10,000 would pay for administrative time to kind of put staff reports together and do other research and that kind of thing.
Just wanted that question answered.
Yep.
Any other parking-related questions? Anybody?
Yes.
Okay.
The car-sharing parking in the multimodal transit center. I'm not sure I understand exactly what car-sharing is, but it seems to be one person who uses the car in the evening and one person who uses the car during the day. Is it more like Zipcar?
Well, whoever's going to address that if you come to the chair.
Somebody come up and explain.
Hold on.
You've got, you've got three sites.
I think we're going to get an answer to your question.
If you, if you're not happy with the wording, we can change it, but the intent would be like city car, Zipcar, those kinds of things where you sign up and you are a member and you take the car out for an hour or a day.
Car-sharing programs.
It's a car-sharing program. It's not, you drive to the station in the morning, and then I come and get the car and go somewhere.
I was trying to understand exactly what the car...
And if the terminology's not clear, we're happy to look at wording that makes it clearer.
Yes, because to me, I thought it was two people sharing a car.
Well, perhaps we could put in brackets, you know, such as Zipcar, City Car programs.
That would work well.
Maybe just car-sharing programs or something like that.
Well, car-sharing programs, but if we put in an example such as Zipcar, City Car, which are existing programs, does that make it clearer?
Yes, and my question at this point becomes, is there any will to increase that beyond the three, since we're sort of trying to encourage people to share cars or use Zipcars? And, you know, there was talk at one point about actually having a Zipcar station located somewhere around there. And so do we want to consider whether we want to use some of these parking spaces for more, and I'm thinking maybe doubling it or making it five spaces or six spaces for car-sharing as opposed to the three?
I don't know that, and again, my experience is also limited with car-sharing, I don't know that it's necessary to increase it, but, and I think the capacity to change it, should it become necessary, exists, but...
And I would agree with that, in fact. I mean, here we're talking about spaces that are controlled by a public entity.
Right.
If they believe they need more car-sharing, I am sure they'll add spaces for car-sharing.
Okay.
I just want to make sure.
I agree with you.
Okay. Great. Good question, though, Scott.
Last one, having to do with parking. I know in the past, it has been an issue with people parking in the neighborhood for Giants games. And one of the advantages there is that San Carlos happens to be the first stop back for all of the...
Yeah, it's the bullet on the way back.
The express trains. And so the, you know, I actually polled a few people in the neighborhood and said, what if we moved it to Redwood City? And they said, don't you dare touch my express train back to San Carlos. So I thought about it from the other aspect of making Belmont the first stop, so that individuals that come from Belmont that park in San Carlos, because it's easier...
I guess my question would be...
Wait a second. This would be definite bucket list, right?
Right. I guess my question would be next.
Guys, there's no way that we're going to be able to change train schedules.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Can we add that to the bucket list?
Can we add that to the bucket list?
Bucket's getting full, huh?
Let's throw that in the bucket list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Scott would like to change the train schedule so that the train...
Schedule, just to stop.
So the train stop in Belmont rather than San Carlos.
The express train after Giants games, that's something definitely we should talk about later.
But his thought process is parking, basically.
Right, right. You're thinking about parking for the station. I get, I get it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or, I guess, comments on parking at this point? All right, terrific. Any other traffic-related issues at this point?
I didn't see anything about the pedestrian island in the middle of Holly Street.
I don't know that that, I, I'm thinking from our last meeting that that was agreed to not have direct nexus to the project. Am I wrong or correct about that?
And there were engineering issues related to it. Yeah, it was more of an engineering problem in the Public Works record deemed that it wouldn't be feasible.
But they came back afterwards and said, yes...
He would look at it.
Based on the island there, the width of what there, it wouldn't be in the middle, but it would be...
Closer to the side.
Three lanes on one side, two lanes on the other, and that there might be a little bit of space there that he could carve out for, for that pedestrian island.
I do vividly remember Jay saying that.
Yeah, so he, I mean, you could put in the bucket list that the Public Works Director should look into whether that's feasible.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else related to...
I think that's it for traffic.
Okay, terrific.
Is that all our categories?
That was all the categories other than other Commissioner topics.
The general category.
So what I would like to do then is to open it to other Commissioner topics and see what else we would like to address before moving forward.
Could I suggest, could I suggest that we start there and we move in this direction?
Yes, you can.
And then when we get past me, then we, then we can make a decision as to how much time, other additional time we're going to spend?
What an excellent suggestion.
If you'd just start agreeing with me, we'd be out of here.
I agree with you on a lot of things.
All right. I think that's an excellent point, and Shannon, you, you did say that you had an additional, additional item.
This comes out of the discussion that you started last week regarding the order in which the buildings could be built, and there was some discussion about financing, and I'm sort of tertiary, but my question is, or concern that I'd like to see addressed is if it's in our purview, and staff can weigh in on this, is whether or not there are, we can put conditions on, the financing is, all of the financing has to be gotten ahead of, before starting groundbreaking, or if it's done by building, to make sure that if some, something happened in the economy, that that financing was still there?
I'm sorry, Shannon, this is a question for staff.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to get the question, I'm sorry. The, I think the, that's an unusual condition to have on a project, because I've been participating in a lot of the mediations and everything else, and I, I think there is financing for the project, but financing is a complicated thing. It's not, we can't just say the developer has financing, because it might not, they may have certain commitments, but they don't have their final commitment, and they've, the funding happens at a different time, then they get their commitments. It might be funding from different sources. And I, and I'm trying to correlate between that and the, creating a nexus for the, for that type of a condition, because developers come to the commission with, they already have some financing, and they financed this application, they've reached this point. And so to say to them... And so, to say to them, sorry, you can't have your building permits until you prove to us that you have financing, it seems to me to be problematic. I don't have, you know, it's kind of a unique question. I haven't researched the complete answer to that, whether it's been done elsewhere. I've just, in my 20-plus years, I've never heard of that type of condition.
Well, no, I was just, well, it's only as a result of the conversation that was going on and everyone talking about the downturn in the economy, that I didn't know if it was reasonable or not to put those conditions. If it's not reasonable, then I'm fine with not making the condition.
Well, what's happened in projects I've seen in the past, if there was a certain element of the project that we wanted to be sure was completed, like a public work-type component of the project, we have, in San Carlos and other cities I've represented, had performance bonds placed on those elements of the project. Like, I had a project in several years ago that I was advising Belmont on where there were public street improvements being put in. And there was a condition for that part of the project included a performance bond, in other words, to assure that the improvements for the public streets would be put in. I mean, there's some elements that we can do. It's not, it's not that the, there's financing, it's that there's a guarantee that certain elements of the project will be completed. In that case, the bond didn't extend to the houses that were going to be built, it was just the public improvements.
I'm actually going to follow that up, because actually that's my only question, so. But I'm going to ask Mr. Fitzpatrick to come up if he can for a second. So, going back to the lease, actually, what is the developer's obligation under the lease forms of building out this project? I mean, it was something that I brought up last meeting, so.
Sure, sure. It's a good question. You know, we share the motivation of everybody of getting the project built, and so we built, you know, some guarantees into our lease. So the way the lease basically works is, on the north of Holly component, we say that 90 days after they get financing, they've got 30 months to construct, okay? And then on the south of Holly end, the constraint to that was less getting financing and more they can't start until the transit center is completed. So, they have to start construction of the south of Holly portion 30 days after the transit center's completed, and they've got 30 months to complete that. So those are the completion goals that are set forward in our lease.
Can I repeat that last part?
Sure. So, for the south of Holly portion, they are required to start construction 90, I said three months, I said, it's 90 days, three months after the transit center, the new transit center's completed, and they've got 30 months to complete the buildings after that.
Thank you. Takes care of my condition, actually, so. Because that was my concern. My concern last time was that, you know, as it relates to the plaza and what I feel is the biggest, one of the biggest public benefits, that that could construct it. And of course, there's no surety on anything, but, you know, if it's written in the lease, I think that's sufficient for me.
That works for me as well.
Any other? Okay. Terrific. Shannon, did you have any other, anything else as far as commissioner topics? Jesse, did you have any other commissioner?
That was the only one that I had.
Okay. My only topic, so to make sure that we get this wording correctly, so I'll go ahead and defer to you.
I have no other topics to discuss.
All right, Scott, let's have it.
Okay. I know we've discussed noise, and I'm going to put noise in the bucket, because I have about 12 conditions that I would like to discuss, or suggestions or ideas.
And through the chair, I wouldn't, Scott, I would...
Put those in the bucket.
Okay, but I would also say that with any of your stuff, I mean, I would just suggest, like, if you want something, just indicate what you want, and then, I mean, if there seems to be...
Want me to just read them?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, there is noise in the east side neighborhood. So, one of the ideas is to create a noise commission or create an east side-specific residential plan for that area in order to deal with noise. And many of the issues that are sort of in our bucket list could be addressed if the city were so inclined to, we looked, a lot of the things were addressed in the general plan, but they've been interpreted differently, okay? And so, the problems still exist. And so, unfortunately, a lot of things get tied to this. So we talked about the quiet zone. One idea is to regularly evaluate the Caltrain station and look for ways for reducing noise, such as requiring lower speaker volumes, ban on leaf blares. And the tie there is that Samtrans will actually be as part of the multimodal station, doing the maintenance and the trash, everything that has to do with the Caltrain station as part of the multimodal station.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Again, what I was going to suggest, Scott, is that you identify those conditions that you would like placed on the project. I mean, not, I mean, we can, you know, if we've got time, we can talk about bucket stuff later, but like, right now, if we, if you could identify those conditions you would like to be placed on the project, you know, maybe we like them all, or, you know, maybe that'll stimulate conversation, but if we could just, you know, go through those.
Okay. So I've got a bunch of miscellaneous questions. Require that the Park in Lufy's go to upgrading or expanding L'Oréal Park. This is something that the...
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Require that the Park in Lufy's. So there's about $800,000 to $900,000 in Park in Lufy's, and the nexus is that the residents of this development will actually be using the closest park.
So that would be a recommendation to the city council?
That the city council allocate...
And we can talk about that, but again, I wouldn't say that that would be a condition of approval, because that would be a recommend, I mean, that would sort of be a bucket list recommendation to the city. So I'm actually hoping that we can just knock off the actual conditions of approval.
Can I, can I get some clarification? David just said that the Park in Lufy's going to L'Oréal Park is a separate recommendation from the conditions of approval of the project, and I just wanted to make sure that was accurate before we move past that.
That's the way I would interpret it, because that's completely, the dedication of the funds for the Park in Lufy's are completely outside of your authority as a planning commission. But it's definitely within your purview to make a kind of standalone recommendation, hey, city council, consider this as part of the project. We think it's a good idea. But it's not going to be part of the ordinance or the PD approval, it's just going to be kind of a separate suggestion.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Here's a condition. As part of the multimodal station plan, add functional Caltrain shelters on the Caltrain platform.
Shelters, okay.
Yes.
Is that something we can do?
My opinions on the things about the noise of the speakers and the platforms on the Caltrain station, that's part of operating a railroad. We don't have jurisdiction to tell the railroad how to run a railroad.
But we do. Under Resolution 2003-79...
We don't, that resolution does not give us the power to affect operations of the railroad.
But one of the, one of the goals of this is, consider new and improved transit shelters in waiting areas, such as train and bus shelters and taxi and shuttle bus waiting areas, to give higher visibility for transit and while making it more comfortable for transit riders. So it specifically calls out train and bus shelters as part of this project, the multimodal piece of the project.
I think part of it is operating the railroad, I just don't see, I hear what you're saying in that resolution, I don't know if that was carried forward in the general plan or not, but...
It was, because essentially, the general plan talks about following the guidelines of 2003-79 unless it conflicts with something else in the general plan.
Well, I still, I just don't, I mean, I don't know the context, I need to know more history whether I could say that, because I know the shelters were modified after the, after they were initially installed to add some wind and rain shelters to the sides of them. So that might have already been satisfied by the Caltrain.
Okay.
You could have us consider it, I mean, if there's some program, programmatic way to request it of the, of Caltrain, but it's just, this is a project that Samtrans, I'm going to just draw the line again, it's a Samtrans and legacy partners project.
We're doing three different projects here, okay? We're doing the development itself, we're doing the multimodal station, and we're doing the landscaping itself.
Okay, well, how, what's the connection between the shelters and the intermodal station?
It's part of the piece here. Samtrans will be running and maintaining the maintenance of the Caltrain station. That's part of the multimodal.
I just think you could, you could ask for the city council to take a look at it, but I just don't think it's a valid condition of approval for the project, any element of the project, including the intermodal station. I just don't see how the shelters have anything to do with that on the platform.
Well, then I think, I think given the legal opinion that we'll have the city council look at it separately from condition of approval.
So it's now 11:30?
That's, I was just going to say...
I saw you looking at your phone, and I think we're going to finish tonight. I think we can finish tonight. And based on that, I think that I'm going to make a motion to extend for another hour.
Great, I need a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
I'd like to suggest that we continue the six-foot chain link fence south of the train station.
Can you be, six-foot chain link fence?
Well, essentially, there's going to be a six-foot fence on the backside of buildings one through four.
Oh, okay, I see.
Okay? And I'd like to continue that on down at least to Arroyo.
Is that something we can, we can add as a condition? I mean, if it's already on building one through four, it seems feasible.
It's more closely related to the multimodal station, but I guess I would have aesthetic concerns and other, you know, there could be operational concerns that we'd probably want to explore. I mean, Samtrans, you know, Caltrain, Samtrans may want to talk about that. I mean, there could even be law enforcement issues related to that, or safety and security issues related to it. It's, it may be a good idea, I don't know.
Wouldn't be...
But I would, I would think that we could, we would need to do more research on that, unless Caltrain, Samtrans has an opinion on it right now as to why it hasn't been done.
Oh, can you come up to the microphone? Sorry to make you get up, but...
No, she's not.
No. Good for all of us.
The issue is whether or not, we're talking about fencing that's on the right-of-way, whether it's adjacent to the right-of-way, whether it restricts access to the right-of-way. I don't think we know enough about what exactly it is you want to do, but I can tell you that we're committed, for safety reasons, to fence the right-of-way as much as possible to prevent trespassing and therefore unfortunate incidents. But I don't know enough about where this fence is or exactly how long you want it to extend or whose property it would even be on.
I would suggest that the fence would extend from the area just south of the platform on the west side of the berm, along the area that is behind building number eight and to the, at least to the end of the multimodal station.
And what's your concern about having that fencing extend that far?
Is it safety or...
It's multi-purpose, one is safety, the other is garbage. All the garbage from that parking lot in those buildings essentially blows to the east. And I've noticed as I ride Caltrain every single day, that wherever there's a fence, the fence catches all of that garbage. And so, instead of having that garbage blow up and over the berm into the residential neighborhood, I'd like to see the fence catch it.
I don't know how to respond to that. We put fencing up for safety reasons, mostly not to catch garbage, but...
I understand.
I appreciate what you're saying. I don't have any problem with saying that if we think there's fencing that belongs there for safety purposes, we put it up, but we can't commit tonight to saying, yes, we'll definitely put it up. And then, we'd have to see in more detail exactly where you want it, how far it would extend and that kind of thing.
I'm thinking bucket list.
And I was thinking, sorry, I'm not thinking, hold on.
Shannon, what are you thinking?
I was actually thinking that we might be able to make that a condition of approval pending, but I guess it would be, we would word it differently, you know, pending the feasibility of...
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I was actually not thinking bucket list, I was thinking, let's go ahead and...
Cyclone fence? We're going to put cyclone fence all the way along the berm? I mean, I...
To the extent feasible.
Shannon, what are you thinking?
No, I would not support that.
I do not support that.
I don't either.
I do. All right.
It's an important point to make. It sounds like you're talking about Caltrain property. I'm not sure why it's been proposed as part of this project, and I'd be interested to know, but I think it's on JPB property that you're talking about.
It could be on either property. It could be on Samtrans property, or it could be on the Joint Powers Board property.
Sure, but if it's on the Joint Powers Board property, then it seems to me it's a separate issue from what you're trying to talk about tonight.
Sure.
That being said, there's also three kinds of fencing we put up, depending on our own assessment of the amount of traffic. Some of it's pretty dense, some of it's chain link, and there are gradations within that. So there's an awful lot of, there are other factors that go into deciding not only where to fence, but what kind of fence to put up.
Okay. Well, it seems that the commission has said that they're not interested in that, and then, so we'll go ahead and move forward. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so, I have yet to see sort of a maintenance agreement for the station area, whether it be the plaza, whether it be the multimodal station. Samtrans and the developer have talked about, you know, smoking, getting people to get off their bikes and walk their bikes underneath the...
Like, we have seen it, or am I, I'm sorry, can I get some clarification?
Is there a maintenance?
Page 15, item five. That's about station area maintenance, is that what you're talking about?
Station area maintenance, that's what I was thinking of. Is that what addresses, and Scott, you were specifically talking about the plaza area?
Yes.
Which I guess I would also see as station area, I see that as kind of doing it all, yeah. So, yeah, I think it's in here. Is there additional language or anything that you'd like to see?
I mean, the concern has been that it's not being taken care of now, and so, I guess I would have to see the maintenance plan in place before, or what that, and how it's going to be enforced. So, the question is, is right now, they're really, they're not enforcing cigarettes, they're not doing anything about bikes, so is the station plan actually going to address those, or are we just going to have a plan?
Well, I guess that would be, are there specific conditions we can add then, or specific language we can add to number five to make that stronger? Or is that something we need to address entirely separately?
Can, is that something that we can do under design review?
Well, this condition attempts to tackle that issue. It does talk about smoking and maintenance, so perhaps it would be best to try and strengthen this language somehow.
Yeah.
You could add bike parking or bike usage. I'm not sure if it would go under maintenance. I think that would go somewhere else, but if you have a suggestion for a condition on bikes, we could probably put bike usage in here or something, or?
I guess my real question about all of this is, is enforcement. And, and what I see is, is the idea that it's great to write something down. It's different if you actually enforce it.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't see any enforcement mechanism for any of the things that have sort of been suggested or promised.
So, is there language we can add then that would, I guess, put an enforcement mechanism in or make that stronger? And I guess maybe that question would be to Al or, or Scott, if you have any specific language you'd like to add.
I'm just trying to, you know, look at that.
I just wanna make it, you know, I just wanna put it in if, if that's what you did.
How do, how do we go about?
Do you have the sheriff patrol it or, or write tickets, I guess? I mean, is that the kinda thing? You're, you're looking for like a, some kind of a hammer to ensure-
I'm either looking for that or I'm looking for some sort of station manager who would actually be at the station, who would, would be able to enforce these types of things. Yeah. And, and have some enforcement ability.
That would be, I, I would refer that issue to Sam Trans.
So, it's officially past my bedtime. So, anything I say in error, I think shouldn't be held against me.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. A couple of things I'd, I'd like to note is, and I'm not quite sure exactly where you're going with this. Let me try to hit on a couple of things. One, one of you had mentioned a little bit ago about economic forces and economic motivation. Keep in mind that this plaza is gonna be the keystone of Legacy's development. They're gonna have their leasing office right next to this plaza. They're gonna have their retail businesses right next to this. They're gonna have, I'm sorry, the commercial building right next to the area and other predominant features right in that area. So, you're gonna have a private developer who's gonna have a vested interest in keeping this area clean, well-functioning, all those things. We're gonna have an agreement with them that's gonna talk about what Sam Trans rights are because we have to have the rights to allow our patrons to cross that area, to allow people to get to our platforms and other things. So, there will be an agreement with us that's gonna talk about all those things. But if the issue is, you know, keeping the area clean, there is a sufficient motivation in the market level with Legacy as a partner there to do that. And I think it's gonna be their responsibility to keep it clean. Cause I think they're gonna be the ones that are gonna wanna keep it clean as much as possible.
And, Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I thought you were done, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Excuse me. Madam Chair, I just saw a condition that was intended to have a person that would be in charge of these issues and that's condition number two, C2 on page 15, community coordinator.
I see that. Thank you.
They'll designate a person with a 24-hour hotline so that someone will be responsible. And it's mostly, it says, it talks about noise and construction noise, but it could be other issues such as, you know, trash issues, debris, things like that. So, we could add some language to that to make the community coordinator responsible for other things in addition to noise.
I would be okay with that.
I would be okay with that, too. I think that, that-
With the addition of a community coordinator to-
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, having-
So, we would add some language and I'll, I'll let staff catch up.
Or just, yeah, complaints about conditions of the, conditions of the transit center, including but not limited to trash, as well as construction noise related to the transit center. How about that?
Bikes, cigarettes. I mean-
He did say not limited to, but yeah.
Yeah.
I-
Yeah.
I would be okay with that language, David. That sounds good to me, but it looks like, it looks like we may have-
Sounds like there's, there's all sorts of colloquy going over there at the, on the bench.
Yeah, we may have, we may have.
Well, I was just suggesting that you put it in two, C2, where it says, in the first sentence, it says, "Sam Trans shall designate a Sam Trans staff person, contractor, consultant to serve as the community coordinator, who shall be responsible for responding to any complaints about." And then after "about," you could insert "conditions of the transit center, including-"
Yeah.
"-but not limited to-"
I think there's-
"-trash, cigarettes-"
Station maintenance.
"-and bikes, as well as construction noise related to the transit center."
Okay, alright. Sorry. We, we found another condition that actually does relate to this very specifically.
Okay.
On page 16. Five, it's actually the same condition. Station area maintenance on page 15, five E. "Sam Trans shall provide a contact number for maintenance and trash complaints for the Caltrain station, multimodal areas and all other areas." And they, and then there's a, there's a number to call. Let's see. "Which shall be posted in the Caltrain station and posted in the lot and then, with a current number."
Yeah.
So, there is something that relates to that already in there.
Problem is, there's no enforcement. There's just a number to call.
Right.
Okay? So, it's great that you can call and complain, but the problem is that that's happened in the past and nothing gets done.
So, Scott, if I'm hearing you correctly, you would feel better about a community coordinator versus just a number. So, if we added the language into two versus keeping what already exists on E, that would make you feel better?
Yes. And somebody that has some enforcement powers.
So, we'll broaden it.
And, is that, then I would just do a follow-up. Is that something we can do, then?
So, broadening the language of the community coordinator position, is that what we're talking about?
Yes. That's, I believe, what we're-
I think we could probably stretch that condition out to incorporate that, yeah.
Okay. Alright, I would, I would-
We'll attempt that.
Great.
Can we also distribute that information to the entire east side instead of people who live within 300 feet of the construction site?
I suppose so. I, I don't see. How, how would you propose doing that, I guess?
You know what? I, why don't we just have some signage up there? I mean, why, you know, why don't you just have some signage? And I think that's, you're already putting some sign up, signage up there under, under wherever I lost it.
I think Scott got the 300 feet from the language that's already in number two.
Yes.
But, but I would agree with you, David. I don't, I don't know that that's entirely necessary, in all honesty.
I think historically-
As long as we have appropriate signage.
Historically, what the problem has been in, in talking to Sam Trans is the connection of the community making the complaint to the right person at Sam Trans.
Right.
Because Sam Trans logs the complaints and historically, they haven't gotten a lot of complaints, maybe because people didn't know where to call. So, if there was a real visible point of contact on the site, signage, maybe something on the website, on the same website-
Brian's number, yeah.
Then people would know who to call and, and I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Yeah, I would agree. I would, I would think signage in a website would, would be, would be better than, than a blanket distribution.
Live with that.
Okay. Alright. Moving on.
Okay. I'm running out of things, David.
That is so exciting.
Okay. So, one other, one more, so, a design entry feature. I haven't seen anywhere where we're going to have a design entry feature for the south end of the property.
Design entry feature. Can you elaborate?
Be more specific?
Yeah.
2003-79. Uh, let's see. Which one does-
While you're looking for that, it might be a good time to throw some conditions up on the screen so we can get some. Okay, then. I will do that.
Can we get a pot of coffee?
Um, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Scott. So, design entry feature. What, what did you have in mind?
I don't know. I'm just looking at the, the project and that was one, something that was very specific in the-
In the rail corridor planned from 2003?
Rail corridor.
Condition is, through the chair?
Yes.
It's already included under section D. Condition 1D. It's on page 16, the bottom of page 16 of the conditions.
Um, the south, the southernmost end of the railroad corridor shall include a design entry gateway feature announcing entry into the city of San Carlos.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
And hopefully, the last thing that I have to say is, I was looking at the conditions of, let me have one more thing here, the project. And, and one of the concerns that I've heard expressed sort of over and over again is the concern of having a restaurant on the bottom floor of building eight. And the idea of the smells from the restaurant, the idea of noise from the restaurant. And so, what I would, I'm suggesting is that we look rather hard at the idea of whether a restaurant and the noise accompanying things associated with a restaurant, included parking and things like that, is really an appropriate use for that space.
Use to the bottom floor. Is that something we would talk more about during design review?
No, that's part of the plan development.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Alright. So, then we would-
The question is, under this plan development, do you want to allow restaurants or not on the ground floor of the plaza?
Right.
Can I suggest that we make it a conditional use permit rather than an outright permitted use?
Guess you can suggest it, but-
That's your prerogative?
I personally don't wanna prohibit a restaurant on the ground floor. I think that's actually a good use of the space. And I think that any noise is gonna be near the berm behind there. So, I think that any noise in restaurants is gonna be absorbed by the berm.
So, you've missed the whole, no, don't say, don't say, don't say that. Don't say that.
You know, honestly, I think a restaurant would probably be an excellent use, too, but is there really any humongous downside to requiring a conditional use permit? Oh, do you wanna speak to that?
Uh, could you come up and speak to it if you're gonna speak to it?
Thank you. You know, there is a restaurant right there now. And when you go across the berm, there's another restaurant just on the other side of the berm in one of those commercial spaces. And if you go up and down, as far as I understand, up and down Laurel Street, you don't, each time you're going to lease, you don't need a condition approval. So, the, the idea really has always been for this ground floor space to be restaurant-oriented. And that is the most likely result. And to have to come in and go through a marketing process and try and get good quality users in there who have to then go in and get a condition of approval will impede the marketing and may just result in us having to rent it as office space, which means it'll be the deadest plaza we've ever seen, you know, in the area. So, it's really what you guys decide to do, but I really would have a, you know, it really will, I think will inhibit the marketing and getting the quality of, you know, a broad-based quality user group and get, we're gonna need several restaurants there, not just one. I mean, the, you know, the small building may have one, but the bigger building is likely to have two or three restaurants. I've been talking to the brokerage community and it's not gonna be one big 9,000-square-foot restaurant. There aren't very many of those. So, it would be highly unusual to require a condition, I mean, to require each potential user to come in and get a conditional use permit.
Conditional use.
Now, certainly, the city's used to having those, certain things that would fall outside of that and you do have to go through, you know, the various ordinances and that sort of thing. But I think to, again, to, to have every use there other than, I guess, office space, require a conditional use permit would be problematic.
Thank you for your input, Jeff. Scott, I guess here would be my, my question, hopefully to wrap this up. Cause it does sound like, like the guy is saying that a restaurant is an ideal use for the floor. Is your concern mostly with the out, the outdoor space and the noise?
Outdoor space and the noise.
Okay. Is there another way to, is there another way to address the, the outdoor space that I'm not thinking of? Because I would, it also makes sense if you're gonna have the restaurant to have some outdoor space for the restaurant. I mean, that is one of the things that we've encouraged in our general plan for restaurants. So, I guess I'm asking staff, is there another way to help, help with that issue?
Well, what we tried to do here is, we tried to think about the things that would create the most noise and perhaps be the most problematic for the neighborhood. And that would be something like a bar or nightclub. And so, we did say in the PD that a bar or nightclub would require a conditional use permit.
I see.
But not necessarily a restaurant. There's a lot of restaurants in the area already. There's the Station Cafe, the Depot Cafe and, and others. And we haven't had a lot of complaints about those. Not to say that, that we wouldn't in the future.
Right.
The main thing is nighttime noise, music and such outside. And with a conditional use permit, what you would get is you would say to a, an operator that they have to turn out, turn off or they can't have outside live music after, let's say, 11 o'clock or something. Or, you know, that, that's the kinda thing that you do, you, you could potentially do now, just to say that any restaurant, you know, can't have music outside after 11. And if you do wanna do that, then you have to go get a use permit. But that, that's probably what we would do at this time. And, and with, with smells and things, there are certain filters that the restaurants can use. And again, there's restaurants in the neighborhood that do a pretty good job of, you know, not creating those kinds of problems.
And the existing restaurants in the neighborhood are pretty much all inside. And this area is being geared for outdoor activities.
Well, the food would be outside. I mean, some people would be eating outside, but they wouldn't be cooking, cooking or preparing.
No. The noise, though-
The noise, of course. Yeah.
Will essentially be outside.
Yeah. The noise, I get you.
And this is already an area that's very impacted by noise.
Right.
You know?
So, what if we just require a conditional use permit before allowing music to be amplified outside or after 11:00 PM? Could we do something like that?
Yes.
How about that?
You could add that.
How about, how about that?
And I suggest that it's 10:00 PM and not 11:00 PM.
I-
That's when the nighttime noise standard-
I'd be okay with that.
Sure. So, require a conditional use permit before amplified music outside or music after 10:00 PM?
Outside, yeah.
Outside.
Outside.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd be fine with that. And Shannon, Jesse? Okay. Looks like there's consensus there. Great.
And then-
Again, through the chair.
I'm sorry.
So that-
Yes, Scott?
Would require a, a conditional use permit for outside music?
Or amplified sound. Did I?
Yeah. You know what? I actually, I think that I was doing something that caused Al some concern. I, I actually was going to require, I was gonna suggest a, a conditional use permit for any amplified sound-
No.
-outside. And it seems like, I'm thinking, based on Al's response, that that, that was a bad thing. And so, I'm, I'm guessing maybe we're, we should be just be thinking about just amplified noise outside after 10:00 PM.
Yeah. I think that's what I was-
Amplified noise after 10:00 PM? Yes. Cause I, cause, right. I thought that's where we were.
Yeah. I was, I was being broader than that, but-
Okay.
I was, I think I've been gently directed away from that.
Okay. After 10:00 PM?
So, there's a conditional use permit required for amplified sound outside after 10:00 PM?
After 10:00 PM. Yes.
And that's, that can be speakers that are outside playing music from the-
Sure. Sure.
...inside or- And that's, that can be speakers that are outside playing music from the, um, inside or anything like that?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
That was a concern with In-N-Out Burger. Their amplified calling of order numbers at 1:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty sure they're not going to put an In-N-Out in that location, and that no one will be selling french fries. Um...
Um, okay, no, I think that's fair.
I'm sorry, I tend to attempt humor more often after midnight.
Well, um, alright, well, let's, Scott, you said you were close, close to the end, was that?
You said that was the last one, actually.
Was that the last one?
Uh, through the chair, can I just make sure I understand that condition? I just want to make sure it's clear and enforceable.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm hearing amplified sound, but before I heard amplified music or amplified live music. Um, and amplified sound, just taken literally, that will mean any kind of background sound or anything.
But just outdoor?
Well, well, you could have outdoor speakers that are just playing, you know, background music like that Pia Cherry, which has the same feature at it now. That's not loud, it's, it's below our noise ordinance. And you want to require a use permit to have outdoor speakers like that? I mean, that's what literally the condition is.
Yeah, and I mean, I, that was my intention, um, and the reason why it was my intention is, one, it's limited to 10:00 PM and later, and also, um, there are no houses behind, um, Pia Cherry. So, I mean, that's, yes, that was my intention. It, but...
I'm, I'm okay with that as well because, because there are other things that can be amplified on speakers beyond music, such as fry orders, but yes.
The idea is that the restaurant's probably not going to be going until 10, 11, 12 at night, hopefully.
And I'm sorry, Jesse, you had a comment also. I want to...
I mean, it seems like there's a little confusion, and I'm confused as to what we just actually did there.
Okay, what I believe we did was that, um, we're requiring a conditional use permit, so not outright denying the use, for, um, any amplified sound after 10:00 PM, which wouldn't, outside, yeah, did I, I'm sorry. I did, I have it written outside, but I did not say it.
So, that amplified sound as opposed to amplified music?
Yes.
Because in theory, like, I think that's what Mr. Rubens was saying, sound is very broad, so, I mean, if people are outside, basically. So you're basically saying if they're sitting outside, they got to go inside?
No, no, amplified, using some electronic mode to...
Amplify.
If somebody with a microphone or a speaker.
I think we need to be very specific about that.
He needs to say electronics.
Extremely specific about that.
Okay.
We could say such as... Because I get pretty loud talking at night, and I would, I would basically think that would be amplified as well.
And I, I, I wouldn't, I would see that, but you're right, we can, we can make that clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could say mu, live mu, such as live music, speakers, um, loudspeakers, you know, that kind of thing.
Speakers.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and add that clarification.
That, that's the intent. It isn't to stop people from...
Speaking.
Speaking.
Right.
Shut up and go inside.
Get inside.
Shut your long inside.
It'll be a super quiet zone after 10:00 PM.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and add that clarification then. Um, and was I, was I right, Scott? Was that your last?
Can I, can I add one, or, or just ask for clarification or make a point?
Yes.
Madam Chair, um, this is for the businesses, right? The businesses in the buildings there. And what, the reason that I would like to clarify is there may be times during the year where somebody or the community wants to use the plaza for an event.
I see.
And, and you, you might not want to necessarily have them go for a full-blown use permit to the planning commission if you're going to have, let's say, the Art and Wine Festival or something, and it goes to 10 or 11 one night, and it's okay. Maybe a temporary use permit would be okay for, like, singular events that are not associated with the businesses there.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and make that, how would we?
Well, I guess I would ask Scott, I mean, for that, I mean, but you can see where the Chamber of Commerce or, or other Community groups, the Alliance Club, somebody else might want to...
I'm really going to go past 10:00 o'clock at night for most of these events. You look at the Art and Wine Fair, it closes down at 6:00.
I still think having the, having the ability to, to have some flexibility for a temporary use permit would be a good thing.
This was, this was intended, number one, to respond to Scott's concern, and two, to apply solely to the businesses that were going into eight and presumably seven. Um, but that was all it was, that was all it was intended to do. It wasn't intended to apply to the plaza generally, it was just intended to apply to businesses going into, um, into the building on a permanent basis.
I think our regular noise ordinance would take care of those issues.
Yes.
Um, outside of the, um, the, the buildings.
Yeah.
Um, and especially after 10:00 PM.
Yeah, so just if we could just clarify for the businesses that are...
For the business.
Yeah, okay.
That are located in buildings seven and eight.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Any other issues, questions, concerns from the commission that we want to address? Okay, then at this point, what I'd like is to see the language for the conditions.
Can you have a five-minute recess?
We sure can.
Last two.
We sure can.
Okay.
A recess, five minutes, thank you.
And then we can find out where that coffee pot is.
I'm not drinking coffee at this point.
If we can have everybody back in their seats. As soon as everybody's back in their seats, we'll go ahead and get started.
She's talking to you, Scott.
Everybody. Everybody.
She's gonna drive, I'm gonna walk.
Perfect. Okay, I'd like to go ahead and reconvene. So, at this point, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through the the conditions and the changes we've made to those conditions. Lisa, if you can help kinda walk us through this part of it, that would be great.
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Colette, and she's gonna go through them, through the changes, I'm just gonna drive the mouse, so.
Okay.
Colette, just let me know, I think, when do we start? They should all be highlighted. Well, here's the first one.
Okay.
So, in keeping with the fact that you have required the accommodation of loading spaces, we would take out this specific provision.
Yep.
In what's approved as part of the PD.
And this is A2, correct? A2I.
Okay, so A2I is struck. Okay, next.
14. There was some concern that was raised that the city would not be involved in the approval of the off, of the improvements within El Camino Real. So, we just added the words "City of San Carlos" to make it clear that the public works director being referred to here is the city.
Okay.
This is the wording of the condition regarding the screening for Building 8. Additional trees to completely screen Building 8 from the residential area to the east of Old County Road shall be added. The additional trees shall be located within the mixed-use project site and on the east and west side of the railroad berm to completely screen Building 8 from the residential area to the east to the maximum extent feasible. This additional landscaping may require the relocation of the bicycle lockers and trash enclosures, which will be evaluated as part of design review.
Okay.
It's fine.
Yep.
I mean, there's an extra space between 1 and 2, if you wanna take it out, but.
Yes, with the understanding that we will correct spelling, typos, spacing.
Okay. During the last one, I'll identify.
Thank you. Okay, great, next.
And this deals with the requirement that they provide more long-term bicycle spaces than the minimum. We provided at a ratio of 1 bicycle for every 3 units.
Okay.
And in number 9, the concern was the, that the program needed to be in place before the start of construction, not at occupancy, so it should be completed and ready for implementation before the commencement of construction.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
This is both, this is the, oh, the color coding. The yellow are the conditions we drafted that are in the supplement. The blue are the ones that came out of your discussion today. And the green are additions that staff has added, things that you haven't seen before. So, this is a condition about requiring the onsite landscaping to be, or the landscaping to be completed prior to the occupancy of each building. But in a later condition, we had noted that there could be some reasons why it would need to be extended. And so, we've added in here that it could be extended by the director, but only if he specifically can make a finding, like there's a drought, we're still working with the Joint Powers Board to get approval for the placement of the trees, or something like that.
But this is the onsite landscaping, in which case, that's guaranteed for the life of the project.
Right, we're simply talking about the completion. This isn't about maintenance, it's about the completion of it. So, they're supposed to have it done before occupancy, but what if we were in the middle of a drought?
But you're talking about the onsite landscaping surrounding each building shall be installed prior to permitting the occupancy of said building.
But also the planting, no, it also goes on, and says that the planting on the berm to the, to the east of each building has to be completed. So, what if we're still working through getting review and approval by the Joint Powers Board? Are we not gonna permit occupancy of the building because we still need to fine-tune placement on the berm? Or if we're in the middle of a drought, and we're in drought emergency, and there are limitations on watering, would we still require them to install the landscaping?
Is that an option?
What? Is what an option?
Only if the director makes a determination that they're extenuating circumstances.
Yeah.
And only if there's a written request, too. So, if the developer's happy to deal with whatever's going on, and happy to be limited by, but he'd have to write and say, whoever, you know, say, "We're asking for an extension, here's our justification," and then that would be subject to review.
Okay.
I'm okay with that language. Can you move a little further down?
Sure.
Are we still on?
Do you wanna, do you want me to keep this one open?
Did we, are we still on 14?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's 14, we're done.
Yeah, that's the extent of it, so.
Didn't we also, isn't?
It's coming up, I think.
Oh, it's coming up, okay.
The numbering has changed, too.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, thank you, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Okay.
The blue change is the 25 years of maintenance.
Got it.
And that, again, language that came from the supplemental clarifying that once the developers finished maintaining it, then it would be the responsibility of the city. Also, instead of it being from Building 1 to Holly Street, it's to Building 8, so those 70 trees, depending on where they're needed, can go anywhere in that area.
That, I just wanna make sure that, that those 70 trees are not part of the trees that are going to be used on the berm for Building 8.
But they are.
70 trees were really designed for north of, north of.
So, you wanted to have it to say through Building 7?
I would say Building 7.
Okay. We'll make that change. Is everybody else okay with that?
That's fine, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I think I know what she means, Scott, so it's fine. Okay.
I don't have a keyboard, but.
So, through Building 7?
I'm gonna remember that.
Okay.
We'll change this to 7. Okay.
And in light of the, there was a condition that said the planting on the berm had to happen within 24 months of the first building permit. In light of the condition that requires it to be done in conjunction with occupancy, staff has suggested that you may wanna consider deleting that.
So, deleting F.
Sorry.
Because of the occupancy wording that we put in earlier.
Right, we wouldn't wanna have something that's inconsistent.
Got it, that makes sense.
And this is where the language came from about, you know, declaration of a water emergency or other kinds of things.
Okay, that makes sense.
And again, in the next one, 16, I think, in light of the discussion that we had here about the fact that this condition, we're able to include it because it's been offered by the developer, and that there's some nexus limitations, we're adding in the wording as offered by the developer, just to clarify that that is something that the developer has proposed.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
And there was some concern about, again, this is language to say that, yes, the developer is responsible for the maintenance of all the onsite landscaping. So, we, again, we had provided wording to make, to make that clear.
I'm sure that Scott, if it wasn't 12:30, would want to add to that somewhere for the life of the project.
That's implied. That's, that whenever we've had a project in the city that we've required landscaping, it's been for the life of the project.
That's correct. I mean, if you've got the project, you've got landscaping, it has to be maintained.
Okay.
And this is the wording for the off, off-street loading spaces, as it was in the supplemental staff report. And the next one has to do with the changes for TDM. So, the program, we should probably add in as set out in whatever portion of the, of here. So, if you would just, we don't have the wording there, but we'd say the TDM program is set out in the PD plan. Shall be, we'll remove the subsidy for 38 units and replace it with the wording that says during initial lease-up of each building, all residents shall be offered transit subsidy of $20 per month for the first year of residency. After the full lease, lease-up of the entire project, the developer shall offer 50 transit subsidies of $20 per month per one year on a first-come, first-served basis.
Can you go back to the parking, to the loading spaces? If they're required to have 2 spaces, and as a condition here, we don't waive that, then, but at the bottom, it says that the developer in San Tras shall enter into a written agreement ensuring that at least one loading space will be provided. It sounds like there's an inconsistency here. If 2 were required.
Yes, if you go down to about the fifth line from the bottom, it says in addition, the developer in Sam Trans shall investigate the potential for a second non-exclusive commercial loading space to be provided in the north end of the transit area. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be investigate, I mean, they shall provide it.
Okay.
On a non-exclusive basis, and they will enter into a written agreement.
That's what I was trying to get at, is if they investigate.
They shall provide.
Okay, will we remove investigate from that wording?
Yeah, shall provide for a second non-exclusive, basically meaning, the non-exclusive means it would be the bus layover spaces, so they wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an exclusive loading space, but we'd be using those bus loading spaces, which are likely to be open some of the time.
Sure. That makes sense.
I saw there was a mistake in the, in the, in number 34, when you're done with that one.
Okay, so, are we done with 33? I think we are.
Yeah.
Okay, 34, under TDM?
On 34, it shouldn't say on the next page, it shouldn't say for one year, it should be for each year, each subsequent year.
Okay. The electric charging station 1 shall be.
Actually, maybe, could you go back up for a second? I'm sorry. Could you write, shall offer an additional 50?
Why is it additional?
I'm just trying to be very clear that every, every year, there's an additional 50 that they add. I may be being over-technical.
Let's say after the first year of the, of the entire project, each year, the developer shall offer 50 transit subsidies of $20 per month for one year. And they shall be offered on a first-come, first-served basis.
Now, I'm confused.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know that additional.
I think additional actually adds confusion.
Right.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I think so, too.
So, if we say, after the full lease-up of the project, each year thereafter, the developer shall offer a transit subsidy of $20 per.
You'll fix it.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I understand you wanna make it clear that it's each year, there has to be 50 subs, 51, 50 subsidies off of transit subsidies.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's just 50, I'll get rid of an additional?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we good with 34?
Yes.
Okay, can we move on to 35?
One charging station shall be included in each of the 3 underground parking garages no later than full oc.
Is it 3?
Well, the, 1 should be offered in each of the, there's 3 parking underground garages, we can put the word 3 in. No later than full occupancy of the residential units, the developer shall evaluate the level of use of the charging stations and add additional charging stations where, when existing stations are fully utilized, the power supply to each building shall be sized to accommodate 1 charging station for every 10 units. That would accommodate the 28, but.
28.
Space them out.
28, yeah.
Based on the buildings without having to say how many go into each garage.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense. Can I?
This is Nikki, but I think we should change that to 80%, because when is they ever going to be actually at 100%?
Okay, that's fine. I think.
Are utilized to.
Fully, it would be 80% utilized.
Well, we could just say when the existing are utilized 80% of the time.
Sure. You'll fix it.
Yeah.
Let's just fix it right now.
Yeah, let's just fix it.
Number 36, Appendix D, Land Use Regulations of the PD Plan shall be revised as follows. Section 3, Buildings 7 and 8, shall have an additional footnote as follows. The use of outdoor amplified sound such as loudspeakers or live music after 10:00 PM shall require a conditional use permit.
Perfect.
Looks good. Okay.
This has to do with the trash and noise complaints. SAM Trans shall designate a SAM Trans staff person, contractor, or consultant to serve as a community coordinator, shall be responsible for responding to complaints about trash or property maintenance. And then the information about it being posted, and then added is, and it shall be included on the City of San Carlos and SAM Trans websites.
Should we get a motion to extend the meeting, too?
Yeah, I was actually gonna say the same thing. But before I, you know, I can't believe I'm about to say this, you know, we've kept you here really late. Do you need more time? I mean, are we doing okay, as far as like, you guys are, I mean, you feel like you've got enough time to do these?
I don't think they wanna go home right now.
I mean, this is important, so, I mean, to the extent that, you know, we've taken this too long, I mean, I wanna make sure we get it right.
No, I, I mean, again, what we did is take the language from the community coordinator for construction and bring it in here to say there's someone who has to be responsible for responding to the complaints, and that the information about it has to be posted onsite.
No, I wasn't doubting that, I was just making sure that you, that we hadn't rushed you in general to get the stuff done.
Well, we would've made it neater and tidier, but.
Okay, fine, then I move to extend the meeting.
But I think we have the wording, and I think we're just about done.
Can I get a second?
No, I'll second that.
I was gonna say for 30 minutes.
Oh, extending the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I think we're gonna extend it to whatever time, right?
Do we need to get it done?
Yes.
That's final, since I moved to extend it an hour. God help us if we need all of that time.
And then, Jesse, was that a second?
For the second, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead and continue, Colette. Thank you.
The language about the relocation of the shuttles, the transit center shall be designed to accommodate the relocation of shuttles and taxis from Old County Road to the transit center, should the city decide to implement those changes.
Right, and that was part 1 of the.
Hold on.
Of the recommendations.
Number 6. Again, it's, I think that was one of the questions that I had earlier. 100 parking spaces in the commuter parking lot north and south of Olive to provide public parking weekday, it says weekday evenings.
After 6:00 PM and on weekends and holidays.
Okay, that's where my confusion was, okay. That's fine.
Is, designed to accommodate shuttles, okay, right. And then, the second part was not a condition of approval, but it was to direct the city council to.
Right, that is part of this, you're going to make a motion to have a recommendation carried forward, or perhaps you'll put together a whole bucket list.
Got it.
Crafted at another meeting to send forward.
Great, thank you.
And so, that's not part of this at all?
It's, we agreed it couldn't be a part of the condition of approval, but, but this could be.
Right.
I'm sorry, did we skip something?
Oh, this is under the Landscape and Sidewalk Improvement Fund for the railroad corridor south of Arroyo, letter E.
And, and the requirement for the landscaping of, of the area south of Arroyo shall be installed by the completion of the relocation. installed by the completion of the relocated multi, multimodal transit station.
Okay.
That should read, installed by the completion date of the relocated multimodal.
Okay. By the completion date?
Yeah. Something like that. It just, installed by the completion. Just doesn't read...
Or no later than the completion of?
Yeah. Either one of those is fine.
Installed no later than?
Either, just doesn't seem to...
So no later than would...
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do it.
And the rest of the conditions of approval after this are the mitigation measures from the EIR. And there was no discussion about revising any of those.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Then at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I would go ahead and entertain a motion. So can we get the, can we get the motion?
The only thing, was the condition on the bicycle storage in there? And I missed it?
We can go back.
Oh, you did the one to three. I was looking, okay. Yes. Nope. That's no need to go back.
Okay.
Yep. 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 Sorry.
So ordinarily, at this point, I believe you guys would put the, put the motion on the screen so we can read it, or is that just so convoluted that that isn't gonna happen? Got it. Fair enough. So let me go to my original staff report and see if I have, because I understand we have to do a couple of things now. We have to approve the PD plan and we have to recommend zoning.
The first action would be to consider making a, adopting a resolution recommending to the city council the making of the required CEQA findings and the adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
So I found the formal motions.
Yeah.
There's only two formal motions?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it time?
I believe it's time. At what point do we, so, okay, so the first one is a resolution to, to make the recommendations to council about mitigation measures. At what point do we put the words "as amended" in whichever resolutions we're talking about?
Probably at the end.
I mean, do we do it for both or just for, for one resolution?
We haven't made any changes yet to the CEQA resolution.
Okay. Great. Just clarifying. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is that one, there is one wording change where it said reduced intensity and it was changed to reduced massing on page, page 16. It's from the reduced intensity to the revised massing alternative.
Revised massing. Okay. Okay. Can somebody go ahead then and make a motion?
I can, but it's one motion. If I, if I add, if I add "as amended" to the very end of everything, does that work? Okay. Then that's what I'm gonna do.
Sweet.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the following resolutions. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Carlos making findings concerning and recommending that the city council make findings concerning significant effects, mitigation measures, and alternatives, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, all in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act for the San Carlos Transit Village Plan Development and Accompanying Zoning Map Amendment of the Railroad Corridor for Mixed Use Station Area MU-SA and Mixed Use South Boulevard MU-SB zoning districts to Plan Development PD District. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Carlos recommending to...
Just, let's do one, let's do one at a time because technically you have to do the CEQA one first.
Okay.
And then...
Then I stop at the word...
As amended. And say as amended on the first.
As amended. Period.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. So David motioned, Jesse seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do roll call votes on these?
I would probably do a roll call.
Okay. I'm sorry. So forgive me. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bergman?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsters?
No.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
So I move that the Planning Commission adopt the following resolution. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Carlos recommending to the city council of the City of San Carlos adoption of an ordinance approving the San Carlos Transit Village Plan Development and Related Zoning Map Amendment to rezone the railroad corridor bounded by the Caltrain tracks on the east, El Comune Real on the west, the northern boundary of Assessor's Parcel Number 50-55-20 on the north, and the city's municipal boundary with Redwood City on the south for mixed-use station area MU-SA and mixed-use South Boulevard MU-SB zoning districts to Plan Development PD Zoning District as amended.
Can I get a second, please?
She's getting one.
Great. Okay. David motions. Shannon seconds. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsters?
No.
Commissioner Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everybody. We are done with this item of our agenda. Oh, I'm sorry.
No. I'm just, I'm just reminding you that you have the bucket list.
Bucket list.
And the, the accompanying motion about the relocation of the shuttles, that you wanted to ask the council to make that a, a project or a priority.
Can we do that now?
You'd be able to review them before the project actually is, is built and, and moving forward. It's still gonna take a while.
So what would be the best way for us to make sure that we do have those, not just the bucket list items, but specifically the recommendation to move the shuttles?
It could be put on your next agenda.
Okay.
And you'd have an opportunity to take action on it before this comes before the city council.
That would be fine with me.
The shuttle one, they can do now, right? I mean, they don't have to re-agendize that. I mean, they, they did it related to this project, right?
That was why we couldn't add it on to the project.
No. The reason you couldn't add it to the project is because it isn't an appropriate subject of a, of a condition. It's not an appropriate condition.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's closely related to the way we've agendized it for Transit Village. So you could actually make a motion, it doesn't have to be a formal resolution like the other items. You could make a motion requesting the city council consider changes to the location of the shuttles and have that move forward.
Right. I mean, I'm happy to make the motion. I'm gonna vote against it, but I'm happy to make the motion if you guys want me to.
Let's do it. I was just trying to find the wording that Scott and I had.
Okay. Or if you guys, if you guys want to do it, I can sit back, too.
Scott, do you want to go ahead and make that motion? Sorry. Or Jesse, if you have your stuff out. I'm just trying to find it. Okay. I think I might have it. It would say something along the lines of all taxis and shuttles that serve the rail corridor, if I'm getting your wording correctly, Scott, will be located in the multimodal station.
I mean, I think that what you really want is you want the, to recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance prohibiting shuttles or taxis parking on Old County Road adjacent to the, the Caltrain station. Right?
So there's your motion?
What's...
I'm sorry.
So I, I make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance which prohibits the parking of taxis and shuttles on Old County Road immediately adjacent to the Caltrain station.
Okay. There's a motion?
Let's remove the immediately adjacent to the Caltrain station.
Is that a friendly amendment that you appreciate?
You want to friendly amend, amend the motion to prohibit taxis parking anywhere on Old County Road?
Where else would they park on Old County Road?
I don't know. Anywhere on Old County Road?
There's not any space for them to park and, on anywhere on Old County...
How about a half a mile from the Caltrain station? How about in front of somebody's ha... All right. Whatever, whatever you want to do. You want, you want, you want a friendly amendment to, to have it within 300, 300 feet of the Caltrain station?
You made the motion. I seconded it, so now...
Amendment. Well, it has been motioned, it has been seconded, and it sounds like the friendly amendment is not, is, isn't what you would prefer and isn't...
I mean, I'm gonna vote against the motion anyway. I was just trying to help out, but, I mean, I would accept a friendly amendment if folks wanted it to...
I'm not getting that indication.
Okay.
Okay. So it's been motioned by David, seconded by Jesse. All those in favor? Can we do a aye votes on this? Okay. Great. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. And then the other, the other items that are bucket listed can be agendized later. Am I, am I correct about that? Okay. Great. Well, in that case, then, I believe we are done with this part of our agenda and we can move forward to reports, correspondence, and general information. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Reports on recent city council actions?
No report.
Thank you. Planning Commission comments or reports?
Nothing from, nothing from me.
Okay.
Nothing from me.
I see nothing. Correspondence? I don't believe we had any additional correspondence other than what was on the dais related to this project. Am I correct?
Right. I believe it was just the letter from Caltrain.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. And then planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects.
This is just an update for your next Planning Commission agenda items. We'll be bringing forward, as I might have mentioned at the last Planning Commission hearing, an amendment to the sign ordinance. We should be bringing back modifications to an existing Sprint wireless facility at 260 Shelford. We'll be, we will be bringing forward a general plan consistency analysis for one of the landmark sites. And then I'm still waiting to hear from the applicant, but there's a good chance we'll be, we will be bringing back the project at 934 Laurel Street.
Great.
And that's it. So it'll be a full agenda next time.
Yeah. All right. October. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned at 10:00 to 1:00.